Hi Laura.
Hi.
Boarding and we're good.
Alright, so let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I will do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we'll go ahead and we'll have roll call. So present, we have Carol, Ed and myself. Absent, we have Bob and Doug. So approval of the final agenda?
So moved.
So we have a motion and a second on in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? We have.
I have no com- no papers. I don't see anything online. Didn't receive anything. Oh, I do have Jane, Jane Greth- pardon me if I butcher this. Jane Grethie has raised her hand.
Yes, I would like to have the board discuss why the board is considering building a brand new building when within Gateway, there are many commercial sites that would be available for either remodeling or buying and it certainly would be less than spending the money on new construction. And it's all of our money, including yours.
Alright, thank you Jane. So just, I don't know if you go back a little bit. So we did go out and look at different locations. We did, we tried. It is.
Okay, there's nothing to talk about. You're quiet.
Sorry, better now. So we, there was nothing available. I think the only building that was available was Gardner, which was way too big for what we needed. And at that time, Alta was also available and that one I do remember. It was like 11,000 square foot, which is also too big for what we needed for. So in the medium, we tried, we rented the small place at Fair Lakes, which is definitely too small and adequate for staff that's there. So the board took a position that this was a need and for the residents and for our staff so we can continue to do, you know, our day-to-day operations and day-to-day business. Add anything else, Ed?
Yeah, we looked at purchasing property down at Fairway Lakes Office Park. I believe two lots was going to cost us a little over $800,000. We learned that we could use our park property, of which we would not have to spend any money to go on ahead and build the building. And so we dropped the idea of putting in a new building at Fairway Lakes Office Park and concentrated on a building at the existing Commons Park. The rest is just a matter of the design of the building and the, the results of that design.
Is it still, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask if it's still being built for your needs as say for the next 10 years or are you looking much more out?
I, I would say the needs are for the next five years. What we're building, I would consider bare minimum. Every single office with the exception of one, right, that we made it a bigger. All offices are for the current staff. So there's no additional space if we were to hire, you know, more people because we wanted to try to keep it within the budget. You'll be able to add it on in a later time. So that's what we have. And I, I think even as of right now, Alta would even be out of question since that's getting rezoned for the apartments, right? That's, yes, so. Alta, the commercial, yeah, that's going to be rezoned and we're going to have apartments over there right next to the charter school. So that's not even an option. Alright.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So advisory committees and reports, we have anything? Oh, local achievements and recognitions. Do we have anything?
Yep, we did just, we did get an email from a resident in Pelican Preserve giving kudos to staff for their swift response. A couple of weekends ago, we had a pretty windy Sunday. And with the Weir project going on over there, one of the porta-potties was on the verge of tipping and we had some other issues and that resident had contacted staff who contacted the vendor and it was a pretty quick turnaround to get out there and get it addressed. And that, that staff member was Andrew, Andrew Crespo from our utilities department. So we want to give him kudos.
Thank you.
And they said the whole thing was handled within two hours. Everything was righted and ship shape and whatever they got on it right away.
Nobody was inside.
Nobody was inside. So kudos.
Alright, anything else?
That's it.
That's it, okay. So advisory committees, items and reports. Do we have any?
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee did meet last Friday. And the work product from that meeting is actually in and among the budget things. So we'll talk, we'll look at today, the priorities they set for different items that they, different ideas that they had to come forward. So the work product of that, we will see later in the agenda.
This is relevant to budget.
Budget initiatives, yeah, the feedback from the residents themselves, yeah. Alright, any other thing?
I don't know if we have any money from Pelican Preserve Advisory Committee, but nothing else to report at this time.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and move into approval of the minutes.
I had no changes or additions.
On the April 20th minutes, we go to page 20 of those minutes. Item E, section E as an elephant. The second dot down. It was highlighted on my minutes and I was wondering why. Did the sentence not make sense? What? I think it was saying that you had, were talking about something flawed in.
What was the requi- I think it was regarding the
Page 12.
Yeah, I, so what was the requirement for, I think it's a four to six, right, for the size of the stones?
Yeah.
For the toe. And then I thought we wanted it to go eight to 12?
I think we were doing rip rap on the point repairs.
I'm trying, I'm trying to remember what it was, but I, I remember one concern was that the toe stone were just a little bit bigger than the number four. So maybe going back to eight to 12. Is that the next one up?
So if I can
That's as far as I remember.
So if I can suggest that we adjusted, say Mrs. Walsh asked for additional stone on the toe because you only have the number four? Or additional larger stone?
It's larger because
It holds, holds it in place.
Larger stone on the toe.
With that amendment, I move approval on both sets of minutes for April 6th and also April 20th.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda items, anything to pull?
No items.
Oh, yeah, no items. Alright, so district, go ahead.
Yeah, item A, just a question. The Lake Bank Restoration 2024, 90% design. Stephen, are you guys subbing out the littoral work on that? Okay, I Who?
Come up and talk that.
I, are we going to drop this one or are we going to? You're going to talk about it in the regular meeting, the, the Lake Bank?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
It's the next agenda item.
Alright, so.
I, I agree.
Okay, district engineer. There we go. See how fast?
Now again.
Sorry about that. Stephen Agapi, Tetra Tech District Engineer. First up is the Lake Bank Restoration, yeah. So at the last meeting, we had 60% plans. They, we included all the sheets in the board book, but there was a lot of sheets and wasn't very useful for conversation. So I pared that down and I provided just the cover sheet, which shows the overview of the lake. It has a legend showing what repair method we're going to do. It has cross-sections for the repair. And there is a set of littoral plans from Grady Minor, which will be applied to the lakes that require littorals per the approved Lee County Development Order. That will be incorporated into the plans. One of the big change was from the 60 to 90 was incorporating littorals and how we're applying that to the restored areas. So last week, we met with staff. I met with Andrew and L and a contractor. I was Matt Tower and we discussed how we're actually going to get the littorals into the Lake Bank Restoration. Because there's been concerns about, we don't want to cut the matting, the fabric, because you're putting holes in your fabric. That's your, that's your armoring system. But how are we going to get the littorals in there? And one of the items that was brought up by staff was a Fleximat, which is actually in Stony Brook right now on the flowway out of Stony Brook. This is kind of what, this is what it looks like. This is from the manufacturer, but Gateway does have photos of it as well. Where it's applied in Stony Brook. So the intent is to use the Fleximat system where we're proposing to use littorals. It's a concrete flexible mat that has stainless steel wires that are through all the concrete pillows that you see there. Underneath are some fabric layers to hold soils from eroding out. It gets rolled out, trenched in, anchored in. And then there's two-inch spaces in between them. So two-inch plug littorals can be planted in between the concrete. So in the event littorals are not managed properly and die or don't thrive for some reason, which seems to happen, you'll still have a, an armoring system there. You're not relying just on bare soil and fabric. So this is our plan right now is to use this where we have littorals. That's the biggest item. Everything else is kind of standard for the previous years. Biggest change is incorporating the Fleximat into the design where we're going to be using littorals.
And you've used this in other places before?
Apparently we helped with the Fleximat application in Stony Brook. That was before my time.
This was years ago.
Yeah.
It was on a small channel leading Stony Brook's system. And right before it goes into Pond 62, which is the final pond before it leaves all Stony Brook, there was a little channel there that they used this.
Did it work?
Still there.
Okay, do, I, I've got some issues that I wanted to bring up.
Okay. Helen, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you are going, so then in your, this is the 90%?
Red 90% right.
When you get to the 100%, you're going to use a mix of these two things? You're going to use that other system that we were talking about?
Three.
This one?
Three.
There's three different systems.
Three systems.
Yeah. So there it's the Armor Max, which is the green. And then it's non-woven, which is just the black underlayment where the erosion is an ass of a year. And then wherever we have littorals, we'll be placing, we're proposing to place Fleximat.
I have, I think it's going to be the same as you, the location of the littoral?
Yeah, we, we need to work on that a little bit.
The four to six there and I
I'm sorry?
So when I'm looking at, let's see.
Are we on Grady Minor's plans?
Bring up, bring up the drawings.
A drawing, yeah.
Yeah, there's the cross-section is what I'm interested in.
Okay, so that cross-section in the bottom right.
Little tall ones, okay, so.
What, what is the limit? Was that your question? What is the limit of this stone material? From what elevation to what elevation? From the control, one foot above control to two foot below or what?
So we're proposing that to be installed. So we're going, we're terminating at the same place we are with the toe stone. And we're extending the Fleximat up to just above control. So pretty much where you see the stone is where we're proposing to put Fleximat. On like on all of the new lakes that we're building. So just above control, six inches above control to where we're terminating the toe stone today.
Okay. There a specific page you want me to go to?
You can go to any of the plan sheets except 105 because that one doesn't have any littorals.
So, so if I'm looking at this, so from where the bahia ends all the way down, either four to six from, from my slope, that whole area is going to be the rocks. Is that what you're saying? Yeah, but on top of the mat, it's going to be rocks. Or is he going to put littorals?
So.
The littorals look after the six, you see?
See, the drawing does not show that.
See, that, so that's what I want to know. I want to know if from here to here is going to be rock? So if the slope is, you know, from here to here is going to be rock and then littorals. That's, that's my question.
Okay, I can't see what you're looking at.
Oh, sorry. No, what, what, what he ends on the, on the, on the sod, the bahia from there, all the way down to the first littoral is that's what's going to be the rock?
Yeah.
With the fabric underneath.
Plan sets?
Because to me, it's like, doesn't the slope as well as low?
I think that's what we got to have a discussion of here.
Go to the sections.
What, what are these littorals going in there for?
The ones that are required, that's what he's saying. The ones that are going to go in are the only ones that are required by development order. That's what he said in the beginning.
Understand, that, that was my question. What are they required for?
This one?
They, they, they there for pond treatment or are they there for erosion? Well, for
They're definitely required.
Water quality.
Water quality. I don't have any problem with
Fish habitat.
Don't have any trouble with water quality, but I just want to make
Allergy control.
No, that, that one I won't buy. Here's the issue. Let's, first of all, let's go backwards. This was the facility's plan for this, correct?
Yes, sir.
This facility's plan and the plans, obviously, they're not matching.
Awesome.
The general, general deal was this is a more safe estimate of the cost. We've now refined it and instead of taking a more, let's say liberal interpretation and having a high cost, which we have in the facility plan with all Armor Max, we've now reduced it back to these other deals, which probably result in the savings of cost.
Right.
For example, pond 125 over in my neck of the woods was $288,000 and now it is boy, when she copies these things on page back to front, it's hell to find it. Sorry, $210,000. So we've had a major reduction. So, okay, I understand that. That happens. But I don't understand, and I brought about five different professional documents of littorals. Every single one of them defined the littoral zone as one foot above the control elevation to two feet below.
Right.
Did Grady Minor not go to that school?
And we're pretty much in that zone. We're just not going above control.
Well, that's what
We're one foot.
That's what, are, are we basically saying that the reason we're not putting the littorals up higher is that the stone is going to be our erosion protection? And that the only thing that we're gaining out of the littorals in this particular area is the water quality issue?
And fish habitat, right.
You have those ancillary benefits, but for us, we're meeting our permit requirement to having littorals. We're putting them in a place that we believe will survive.
I'm just trying to make sure that I explained to these, these are my constituents.
Yeah.
They ain't going to like them there to begin with.
Of course.
They are not going to like it at all.
Right.
But the issue is it's got a requirement. I just want to make sure that we're doing this as a, notifying, notifying them that we're doing it as a, a, a permit requirement.
Right.
And I'm not going to try to pull the wool over their eyes that it has anything to do with erosion control. Because you don't put stuff at one foot to two feet below the control elevation. The erosion starts one foot above. That's where the wave action's at that kills you.
I agree with you.
Starts the problem. I just questioned whether Grady Minor, what the hell they were doing.
We use the pond standards, so it, the pond standards may actually tell us where to put them.
They show one above, two below.
Okay. I mean, we have a lot of fluctuating water here, so I think it'd be best, sir, to put that lower.
Again, I don't have an argument. As long as we are just stipulating that this is a water quality issue, we want to put those littorals down at that lower level. I don't have a problem with that. But don't try to sell it and insult my intelligence that it's erosion control.
No, sir. Actually, the reason why we're using Fleximat is because I don't have, at the end of the day, I want to make sure that if the littorals are there or not, it's going to be protected. So for erosion control, the Fleximat will do that job.
And the other, other deal is, is that I couldn't tell by the, the way it was priced out. But is the Fleximat and the, the Armor Max about the same price?
Yeah, because the number four stone is so expensive, it's kind of a wash when you swap them out.
When Ed, to kind of answer your question, when Pelican first installed the Armor Max and we mandated the erosion control item that we thought littorals was going to provide. Five years down the road now, we have not had an erosion problem. And in some areas, we don't even have littorals where the stones are. We have backed off of that early thought process and requirement that it was mandatory when you have the Armor Max. I know, I personally no longer believe it. But it does improve water quality and it does provide for us wildlife habitat.
Our people don't like that.
Okay, well, they meant, but and again, as Stephen has said, it is a requirement, so.
Yeah, requirements are requirement. Okay, well, I just want to make sure that, one, if somebody's looking at the facility plan, they understand that now we're into design. We've got more information and we, we made a switch in the, in the layout. The only other thing I can think of is that we got to work out is at least over on the ponds on our side, is ingress egress a nightmare? It's a nightmare. I think we need to take and be figuring that out before we get into ready to bid or have bid. And then our bidders going out and finding out that our owners are telling them not on my yards.
Yeah, lessons learned from previous jobs. We've, we've taken care to try to identify as best as possible easements that are, are okay to use. And I feel like we have, we have good confidence that we have access, sufficient access for these ponds.
Ed, let me ask you this, just because we took this approach in, in, in one of the ponds. We reached out to the residents prior to saying if anybody wanted to volunteer and give out the easement, like either they had already bad breaths or something. Because I know we did that in one pond that we did not have an easement and the homeowner jumped on it. It's like, yes, use mine because at the end you're going to fix it. So you, we could take that approach as well. Like if somebody, you know, in your community wants to say, use mine because you're going to fix it and give me new sod.
We have easements shown on all of our plan sheets on the sheet C dash zero zero zero. And I feel like
You can use all of them?
I, I think, yeah, all of them can be used. The, the worst one will be 78 in Daniels Preserve. There's
125 is a nightmare.
125?
Yeah.
That's, hold on a second. Well, we have access right off the road, so.
It's tough.
How, how are they, I mean, how are they getting there now to do regular pond meetings?
Mainly through drainage easements or wheeling and dealing. Mainly through easements or maintenance, since the contractor has worked out a deal with a resident to pay for act.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is it had not been a problem in Pelican. And I was just curious because you got easement to get there with the buggy to treat the water.
Maintenance has been horrible, but that's the problem.
Okay.
Pond 128, why do we have the gaps? Have those been previously done as point repairs?
Yeah, they have been and they're in excellent condition still.
Okay, and so what we're proposing to do is going to match those properties?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I think Brad Rogers did those probably five years ago maybe and they look
I'm assuming
They look great.
That's what I thought that they had been point repaired.
Yeah, they, they did, I think, the Armor Max and stone there. And he did a really thick layer of stone, so they haven't had any issues.
So did I, did I hear in all of that somewhere that this might save us a little money?
Well, based on the facility's plan, yes, because we budgeted for worst case scenario, yes.
Yeah, when we were blanking using Armor Max, it was very expensive. And we've been advocating to try and find a more efficient but effective way of doing the repairs.
Work that we have to do still is finalize our littoral areas. There's some areas where we can get them away from residential areas, like on Lake 125. We haven't shown on residential side, but along the road is a nice opportunity to put a good portion of them. So we're going to be doing things like that.
Okay, I have one question and I don't know if you, I don't know if it was included on the, on the facility plan or not. So we are meeting, are we meeting all development order requirements now? Or the only the ones that are required for the lake, lake trees?
So are you asking about existing conditions?
Yes, so like, if we're going into a pond, let's see, 125, the development order requires 40, you know, lake easement, like 40 trees. And then there's 10. Are we bringing that up to compliance? Because I mean, I would prefer to do it all once.
We are.
We don't have to, so we are
The intent is to get these two compliance.
Okay, so then somebody's going out, so staff or you guys are going out there and seeing what, you know, what we're short and what we have to plant?
Right, yeah. So our survey picked up trees on 125. I don't believe there are any lake trees.
I just
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, but there are essentially like no littorals on that lake. Today.
Alright, so that's it. I guess I just wanted to know if there's, it's a requirement for a tree or any planting of any kind because it's going to be near either the rock or
Yeah.
Or the control. So do it all at once so we don't have to come back and do it all.
Yeah.
Alright, I don't have any other questions. You Ed? Bob, you have any?
Not about that particular one.
Okay, so we're good with Lake Bank Restoration and then go ahead.
Are we sure? I mean, there were some questions about where we were starting stopping the Armor Mat or the Fleximat. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page with the
You, you mean going from Armor Max to the
Where, so is everyone okay with us using Fleximat where we're planning to use littorals? Sounds like there was an
Oh, the Fleximat, oh, no.
Yeah, there were some questions about where we were stopping it.
I'm fine with it.
Yep.
I'm fine with it.
As, as long as we're protected to the one foot above control where the erosion really starts on all these ponds.
Yeah.
Every pond, that's where it starts. And we're using the matting as our basis, not littorals, the matting to protect us. I don't have a problem.
Do we, do we have an example of the Fleximat right now to look at?
There are some examples in photo form on the, in the board book. And then there is a real world example in Stony Brook.
Oh, there is one, okay. I was just wondering. We typically pilot it. It looks good.
It, the picture looks That's pretty much what it looks like.
So there is an example of littoral.
So we do have some experience, that's all.
Yeah, there's approximately a two-inch gap in between the corners of the, the actual concrete where a two-inch plug could be placed. If it's larger plants, talking to the rep, the squares could be snipped out and you could put a slightly larger plant.
Are they doing a two-inch or are they doing bare root?
He called for two-inch plugs. The, the landscape architect called for two-inch plugs.
Two-inch plugs.
Two-inch plugs.
Do you want to just touch on next steps with this?
Next steps will be for us to wrap up our design, get it to 100%, barring any other comments. Get it to Lee County for permitting review. And then next meeting, we will be preparing, providing an RFI. That'll go to SRF or Inclusion for Construction Funding.
Can we get a good pre-bid estimate on this as designed while it's in permitting? Get a estimate of what it's going to cost?
Yes.
From one of the vendors, so that we don't get a surprise.
Yeah, we actually talked about
Wasn't a lot of gusto in that, Steve.
So, yeah, I mean, we have a, an estimated cost for construction based on previous years plus all the inflation. We did talk with Matt Tower on Tuesday. We're going to give them a set and ask them to give us a courtesy review, see if they have any, you know, red flags and they can give some feedback as well.
I think we can look at the last time this was bid out and find those vendors and just reach out and say, hey, you know, you're for 90%. Let us know. We're going to bid this out towards the end of the year. Let us know if you have any questions.
Yeah, I just want to make sure the, the number that we take and have for the SRF, if we need 2 million, we get 2 million. We need 4 million, we get 4 million. I don't want to go in for 2 million and then find out the bids score.
We always go high on the RFI and then once we get bids, it's based on the bid amount plus contingency.
Okay, so we're, we're awaiting the facilities plan for their final review from SRF. This is included as part of the facilities plan. As you know, we self-funded this design and we intend on taking this to the August RFI with SRF.
Correct.
RFI is Request for Inclusion. And then at the same time, in the, in the next coming meetings, we're going to be coming to you with a resolution for FY '25 design funding. So that way we can go to SRF for that. Keep, yes, keep a year ahead, so.
So was there any other decision you need from this board till you go to the 100%?
No, I've got all the answers I needed. If you have any other account, you know, feedback, just send an email to staff and then shoot it our way.
Acquisition is the big one. Access to the site.
Chelsea, did staff have any feedback or the feedback is already included to you?
We, we provided feedback. I haven't had a chance to review it. I do know that our public work staff had a chance to give some feedback, so. Yes.
Okay. Alright, so with no, no other questions?
Is, is that product self-sourced?
That is sold by one vendor. There are similar products, but
Are we getting it restrictive to that one or are we?
I, I mean, I would be open to something that's equal quality.
I think we have to provide equal.
That's what I was, well, we, we could go self-source with a restricted spec, but we
Yeah, we could do a performance spec that
Do some type of a performance deal, but that's why we're doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so then the next item be the task authorization update? Alright, so then the next item be uh, the task authorization update?
Alrighty. So irrigation meter replacement, we're scheduled to start construction uh, July twenty-fourth. Irrigation pump station generator, um, we received a couple of shop drawings from Zavet. They are the contractor. Um, we are also waiting to finalize the loan agreement with SRF. Uh, irrigation enforcement improvements, we're working to ninety percent right now. That should be delivered to staff at the end of this month. Bloway weir adjustments, um, porta potty issue has been resolved. We've got uh, we're one, two, three and pond thirty-eight. They started restoration on two and three. They gotta replace the sod there. Um, they're missing railing on two and three and thirty-eight and weir one. Um, once they, they have clear direction on that, they'll be able to wrap that up in a, in a couple of weeks. Um, so.
So there will be a railing around thirty-eight?
There will be a railing on all of those, yeah. It's just, it's a safe, there's a, too large, oh yeah, you get it. Um, Griffin Utility Relocation, you guys have seen the progress driving through that lovely MOT out there.
Oh, so, so back to the weirs. So the completion date is supposed to be the thirty-first. Are we, are they still gonna meet the thirty-first or July first?
Their contract is through August. This is their, their early finish day.
They're way ahead.
Yeah.
They're way ahead.
Yeah, they had like, they're essentially waiting on some aluminum structural pieces and railing, so, and restoration.
Okay.
But uh, they're hopeful to finish early.
And then they're gonna maintain the sod that we noticed was.
Thank you.
Okay, just one second. Let's just to record reflect that Bob and Doug Banks have arrived. Bob a little earlier than this, three thirty-seven. Alright, go ahead.
Say we came the same time.
I'll live with that.
Um, Griffin Utility Relocation, um, Parrot or FPL assistance, we're working with staff to finalize our project. Um, Lake Bank Restoration, um, the current construction projects, we did a walkthrough on sixty-two and fifty-eight. Um, we have some, we have punch lists for them to work on. Um, a lot of sod issues, uh, some fabric showing here and there. Um, overall, the product looks good, in our opinion. We spent three hours combing over it very slowly, so I think we captured everything. I don't know if staff had a chance, or not staff, sorry. Uh, board supervisors had a chance to put eyes on it yet.
I have because I, I was, I wanted to see your punch list and kind of do the walk with it, cause if you address all. I would have, me personally, so if you guys can send out, I think it would even be beneficial to send out to all of us and include Stony Brook, cause I know Margaret had asked, just include them and say this is it, cause maybe it will alleviate us from getting emails questioning if we already know that we're going to address a specific item, so.
Yeah, staff was compiling their comments and was gonna send it to Tetra Tech so that we'd have one comprehensive list and as soon as we get that, we'll get it out to everybody.
I'll put a figure too, like kind of like an overview map.
Okay, like how we did at eighty-three, that.
Yeah.
That was.
Yeah, if it's on paper, it's hard.
Yeah, yeah, we just go, so it doesn't grow.
Yeah. Um, they are planning to start on seventy-nine yesterday, I believe they started.
That's Daniels, right?
Yeah, Daniels Preserve, that small little pond.
And the one area in, on sixty-two.
Yeah, sixty-two change order, yeah.
The, the last home?
Yes, there it is.
Okay.
Uh, Pelican Preserve inspection, we sent a updated report to Chelsea today. Um, just waiting for P-PAX review of that for any final comments. Uh, Gateway Storage Building, um, we are in permitting right now. I haven't had any comments back from Lee County. Um, South Florida, we responded to their RAI and we're waiting for a permit from them. Gateway Admin Building, we're waiting for Geotech to finalize our plans. Once we get that, we'll be able to wrap up hundred percent. Um, FY twenty-four Lake Bank Restoration, we talked about.
Uh, let me go just go back one. Are we all set with the admin building and Hampton Park issues? We iron out everything we needed to? Cause they were going a hundred percent, so.
I had reached out, we had attended the meeting and um, the gentleman who was the Lone Ranger for the HOA Board. Um, the eighteenth was a date that sticks in my head, so I was gonna, I was gonna reach out tomorrow and see if they had a quorum and had gotten enough members to um, resolve the.
We'll, we'll keep moving.
We are, we are gonna keep moving, yes.
Okay, Timber Creek Sheet Flow Analysis, um, we're, we're trying to wrap this up as fast as possible. Um, there've been some uh, issues that have come up trying to get data from Timber Creek and then we're following the permits and saying flow shouldn't be coming from the airport, but we know it is, so we're expanding our model to capture that flow. Um, my staff tells me that they should have our model um, incorporating all the off-site flow this week and then we'll be able to take a look at that and see if that's the reason why we're having some.
Over this across Daniels.
Yeah.
It's coming through those twenty-four inch.
Yeah.
Wind currents. Yeah, about five hundred acres worth.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just, so regarding the fire that we had behind the facility, cause it's near, would that affect this as well? Because I know forestry was over there with their trucks, so there were some areas that. It may, you, you may want to revisit maybe because.
Where was the fire?
Maybe behind here?
On this side of Daniels?
Yeah, it's like right, probably like a thousand feet that way.
It was.
It happened uh, la- la- Sunday, this past.
In the FPL easement?
No.
No, the wetland right behind it, literally behind the water plant and behind our building. It, it was pretty intense. They had uh, six trucks there, four sheep for the whole day.
Yeah.
So I, I know there's a lot of damage there and then I'm just concerned if it's anything like the damage that was caused by in Daniels Preserve, then, then I would like for you to revisit that because the water now is gonna come even easier because now it's nice and clear and there is no berms or nothing stopping it, so I think that's important to.
Definitely. Um, hydraulic model, um, we've gotten the fire hydrant flow testing and the complimentary data from Lee County. So we can calibrate our model. Um, that'll take um, a little bit. Once we have it calibrated, we'll be able to include FGUA's connection to run scenarios for our system. So, we're, we're scheduled to get that done in the first week of June.
And FGUA is lighting up the bit to, to get, to make this happen.
So that it's back, go, go, go.
Well, yes. Yes, so, but nothing can go, go, go until this modeling gets done and they, they're worried about. I have a meeting with them tomorrow to remind them of that.
Okay.
Um, Arborwood Phase Three, they are looking to turn over utilities shortly. Um, there's a couple of punchless items still on stormwater. Um, they're still working to wrap those up, so we'll probably be working on turning over Arborwood in the next uh, few weeks or months. Daniels Preserve Apartments, they are still uh, wrapping up their plans. They, um, we had a meeting with them on Santosa. Actually, we had a follow-up meeting and they were talking about how they're gonna get irrigation to the.
Worthington.
This is the Worthington parcel, yeah. They're struggling with on how they're gonna get and pay for the irrigation line to their property.
I think it's the latter.
Yeah, paying for it.
Paying for it.
Yeah.
They may request to come in front of the board. I have relayed to them that you all, you all have already made the decision that they needed to connect to our system. Um, but if they, they want to plead their case, we, we've offered it and offered them the, the available dates.
Right.
Um.
Bring your checkbook.
Bring the checkbook.
He takes credit cards.
I didn't say bring cash.
Santa Luz is in construction. There's been some erosion sedimentation control issues out there. Um, contractor's been notified and they're addressing those. Probably, yeah.
We, we did, staff did notify Lee County Code Enforcement on Santa Luz and so um, it's in their hands at this point because.
What happened?
Has anybody looked at those storm sewer and stuff? Cause it's, it's pathetic.
Yeah.
Code Enforcement is, is aware and I, I believe they were making a point to go out there on site to take a look. We'll have to follow up tomorrow and find out, but they were notified.
Not on here, which will be on the next one, is Alta Resources, um, redevelopment to Santosa Apartments.
Yeah.
Two hundred fifty-six unit apartment complex.
Are they tearing down the existing?
Yes.
Building?
Yeah.
At Alta totally?
Completely, all the asphalt, the building, the generator, everything's gone.
And that, we don't have any issues with county or anybody on any uh, land use deal on that at all?
Um, I personally.
Go home to family in exchange.
I love this, yeah.
They can.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that might be. I didn't look any further than, but the Liv Local Act provides a lot of flexibility for zoning.
But what's the trade-off in units per acre?
There's, there, no, there's an extra number of units have to be affordable of workforce housing.
They didn't work on our advantage.
Yeah, and so I guess the information needs to go to Ross to see if he needs to plug it in for this upcoming budget.
That changes stuff, yes.
Favor.
I went.
Yes.
Yeah.
So. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, um. Are, are, are you, are you, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, two things. Um, the Pelican Preserve Road Inspection uh, report was very, very good. Um, they are definitely incorporating your, uh, the suggestions of the report into their uh, budgeting for this year. And uh, that was at the last P-PAC meeting.
Which, when was the date of that P-PAC?
Last Thursday.
Okay, since then, we've up, we added some more information.
May eleventh.
Yeah, we did provide an Excel spreadsheet, but um, after we submitted the original report in the Excel spreadsheet, we kind of married the two, so it's all in one document now, so it should be a little easier to follow and understand.
So they were basically.
Yes.
The costs were the same, it's just combined into one.
Well, they were mainly looking at doing your poor and your fair.
Right.
Streets.
Nothing changed though.
In the next, I think you had a four-year plan.
Four years.
So did any of that?
That did not change. All we did was project further out um, for the, the roads that were in better shape.
And then the second thing, um, we had a meeting uh, with you and with the people from Prado.
Correct.
And David Zimmerman had followed up with an additional email that um, we s- uh, we supplied copies to at our last meeting. Um, and he told me yesterday that he has not heard back from you. So are you still working on that or what?
Yeah, so.
Is, is there any credence to it? Is there any area that is still uh, GSCDD?
I don't wanna, I'm not sure. I don't think so, in my opinion. Uh, me and Tony spoke a little bit after that, that email was circulated.
Okay.
And we had a call. I don't know if you remember, it was pretty brief, but um, I showed you the diagram, shows the where um, maintenance responsibility starts and stops for private and, and Gateway. And uh, it didn't seem like it was and then we did a check to make sure that what was in their bond, their OPCC was covered with what was handed over to Gateway and all those numbers meshed out, so um.
There was a.
There was another item brought up, yeah, on Saturday. You sent an email um, talking about sidewalks flooding, alley getters flooding.
That's, that's not, that's a different separate issue, not part of this as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, okay.
But related to the bond, and I was gonna ask for another month when we get there, but related to the bond. When the first twenty-five or thirty houses were constructed, Lennar was not conforming to the Permit Criteria Act.
Yeah.
And they started from that point on. But there was a list and we're researching to get the list of the homes. This is the one that Scott Connell had investigated a number of times. And his last investigation was about nine months ago. Don't hold me to that, but these homes still weren't connected.
Right.
So until I get, till I run that rabbit in the hole, this is the only leverage we're gonna have to get them to do what they should have been doing.
So to follow up with what Bob's talking about, the Permit Criteria Manual says that sheet flow cannot enter the lake down the lake bank. It's gotta be captured and then conveyed through a pipe to the lake. This eliminates your erosion problems that we're seeing. Right, so um, when the home builder was to go and build the home, they were to install roof drains or gutters, sorry, and then downspouts and connect to um, the uh, the cleanout on their property.
Or homes on bonds.
Right, and Bob is mentioning that they didn't do that. Uh, because it's on private property, it's not being conveyed to Gateway, it's not included in the bond that Gateway holds. So that's, that's the issue.
But it, but it is an open item that they've known about for four years, the board, and they haven't done. They went from that point certain and they did the next three hundred homes properly, but they never went back and fixed
first one.
Those first forty-five, they should have been doing it right from day one.
Yeah, I guess part of the discussion that Stephen and I, we had asked at the last board meeting, just before the last board meeting, was that the uh, from the standpoint of the Permit Criteria require these particular items, pipings and conveyances to incur. And that the bond, remaining the bond is what, seven hundred eighty, some odd thousand dollars, is that?
I think so, seven hundred and eighty.
And there was an estimate, Steve and I were chit-chatting about the estimated cost, assuming five hundred to a thousand dollars a piece, I think.
Yeah.
To install the, the remainders. And so I know we, the board's talking about maybe tabling again, but I think reasonable might be to reduce it to a thousand dollars times the number of units because it was required to be performed. Uh, at least have reduced the bond to the amount necessary to have those installed.
That's.
They've never denied that they have to do it, Lennar.
Right, and, 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 and again, this is four years down the road.
They clearly don't care about conversations and letters.
Trust me.
The seven hundred thousand is a big carrot. Another thirty days and maybe they'll get interested.
Yeah, and recognize this seven hundred, some odd thousand dollars is not their money. It's a bond that's out there and they need to, when you have a bond, they need to renew it every year. They keep, and there's a fee.
All the work for them to finish these.
Right, and then there's a certain number of assets that are sort of set aside by the bonding company and or by the entity that's getting the bond, to make sure there's enough collateral fund the bond if necessary. So that's part of their incentive is to not pay that fee any longer.
All they gotta do is fix those homes.
But again, everything else is completed and I understand what, what you're saying.
Okay.
But I think a resolution could be a thousand dollars times whatever's left and that would be reduced the bond to that amount.
That is one alternative. The one I will propose is to defer to another bond, but thank you.
Thank you.
What's the status of the development across from uh, Boulevard Delhi, uh, adjacent to the golf course?
Um.
That little triangular piece of property is owned by, I thought, a California group.
Is that north, are you talking about by Hidden Links? Or no, you're talking?
The opposite.
No, it's on the south end, down by uh, Boulevard Delhi. It's that little triangular piece of property is where the cop likes to hide and park, getting people on Gateway Boulevard.
About that one. I'm not familiar of anything going on.
Yeah, there was something going on. We were told it was gonna be like a hundred, hundred and ten, uh, what do you call it? Uh, uh, those houses are close together, uh. Yes.
Are you talking about something different than what's?
Yeah.
Down, um, Gateway Boulevard towards Hidden.
It's something we don't have here.
We haven't reviewed any, I haven't reviewed any plans. I wasn't aware of it, so. Yeah.
From a Russ Wire point of view, when does a new tenant in a property or whatever become part of our plan? Because there's an expansion, yeah, because there's an expansion.
Blank land, it goes from blank land payment to a uh.
A per lot.
It, it goes on when, once it gets platted, it gets added, it gets figured in.
Once it gets what?
Platted.
Platted.
Although at times you may have a condominium, a condominium is not a subdivision plat, they, condominium docked.
Well, I'm referencing a commercial plat. There's a, there's a commercial property being developed in the Wood and Dixie Shopping Center. And I know prior years we missed that and if it, if we can now find out what it's, it's been uh, it's, it's approved, it's a plan, it's moving forward. So if we can include that for the twenty twenty-four budget year, I'd like to make sure we.
Yeah, what I was suggesting is give that information to Russ and then he'll.
To Laura, give it to Laura and Laura.
Laura, yeah, and then they'll evaluate, he'll evaluate whether it's appropriate to allocate the.
So how do we as a district find out that that's gonna happen?
Uh, normally Russ does that as part of his review for the taxes. Each year he'll go through and see what properties have changed and what all the new plaits are and then he redoes his calculations.
Okay, just make him aware of it if you would, Laura, because it's going to happen.
But at times what may happen is there may not be a plat or a replat. Maybe redevelopment of a parcel, which is a building permit or site development plan or something else that's done without, typically without notice to the public, it's done in-house at the permitting agencies.
It's a Taco Bell going in there, so, which I'm not thrilled about, but nevertheless, it's.
It would be a city of four miles permitted by class E.
I know, okay, but it is something that might impact the uh, Russ's plans, so that's why I want to make, make him aware of it.
I have, I have a note to let him know.
Anything else for Stephen?
Nope.
Thank you.
Stephen, are you, excuse me, one last thing. Are you in any way involved with the, and I don't know if this is staff or them, the uh, Paver Project in Matarita too?
Oh.
No, that's.
That's staff.
Oh, that's KW. KW is overseeing that project. They're the ones who got the prices and.
Okay, I'm not quite sure why, but okay, talk to you.
Okay.
Alright, so just then follow up, just send us the punch list one is ready to all of us and then Chelsea can forward it to. All right, so just then, follow up, just send us the punch list one is ready to all of us, and then Chelsea can forward it to all Stony Brook residents so they can look at it. All right, thank you, Steven, all right, so next, Leslie. We have. The admin agenda, so propose amendment to the utility rule, eh, for billing adjustments, leaks and other events.
Leslie is here too.
Tasty reading.
Leslie, Rictor Vic Utility Billing Manager, as mentioned in prior meetings, um, towards the end of June, we're gonna present then update to propose changes to the utility rules. So I've been giving preview to certain areas that will be anew, will be added new to the utility rules and one last meeting, we mentioned deposits, this one will be adjustments to the water bill. So the verbiage under the background will formalize, um, and give staff the ability to technically process an adjustment on a water bill.
But historically, has that been done?
It has been done since twenty thirteen, um, staff was given direction by district management or Board of Supervisors, not really clear, um, there's no, however, there's no documentation, like a formal resolution or an amendment to the utility.
Policies.
Right, it was policy, so in this rule that we will be adding, I'm summarizing um, the adjustment, and then the policy will dictate the threshold and the conditions that apply.
So this is just an F Y I, this is not being adopted today, this is an opportunity, and if you have any feedback for us.
So generally, if there is a leak in somebody's water or whatever, how, how soon do they contact you? I mean, do they know it pretty quickly?
We, um.
I mean, is it like a month later till they find out or what?
It varies, we, um, do attempt to, as a courtesy, to notify the customer if there is a leak, but they could also have a line.
Do you know that there's a leak?
We, we get notified in our metering system if there's continuous water running after eight hours. So eight hours, if, as long as we're getting a signal from the meter box, then we're, we're able to provide them that information. But if there's a massive line break and twenty thousand gallons of water run through.
Sure.
You know, that's not anything that's really, that we can control.
But really, we usually take a really good appro, uh, proactive approach.
Okay.
On, you know, take a look at this and usually, and then you do, sometimes do send staff even prior to go.
Yes, um.
If it's outside of the home, but past the meter, sure, I think that it's, you guys really that take a proactive approach in trying to.
Yeah, once or twice a week, we attempt to either notify a customer by email or door tag, depending on the volume.
Okay.
Again, it's all driven as long as we're getting communication from the meter.
I, I, it's a pet peeve with me, uh, I have no problem with honoring those who need to be honored on this, there are those that play games, so under the frequency, what I'd like to see is I have no problem with the ones per calendar year.
Okay.
No more than three in ten years.
Okay, like add a cap?
Put a cap. You've gotta, if, if they know that every year they can come back, their deal of being more observant and watching or paying attention to your, uh, uh.
Door tags and notices.
They'll ignore it, saying, well, I'll just go in and I'll use my one to, uh, to get a deal, put a cap on it, three, three in ten years.
But.
We also.
Go ahead. Comparing the courtesy that's demonstrated in this to the city of Fort Myers, the city of Fort Myers just goes, too bad, hey.
Right.
They don't try to notify us, doesn't make any difference, now the water's running, whether it's a pool leak or a hose running or anything.
I would use the city of Fort Myers as an ex, example in nothing that has to do with utilities.
Of what not to do.
They are, they, that, that's would be the time I would.
So this is enlightening, all the reason, Carol, that we need to go to.
Whatever the city does. And you're better off.
There's also limitations in the rules here, in the policy, because they do have to consume fifty percent higher than their average. So that cuts off a lot of people as well.
And I don't remember, and then we do require, uh, still an invoice of the paid repair.
Right, yeah, okay.
Like a running toilet or things like that, but.
Yeah.
What do you do with a, a running hose?
Well, that, that falls into a different thing.
Oh, okay, but it was, it was one of the items.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Okay.
So then that we don't require, but if it's a break, like a, a master meter irrigation break, but did we require a license repaired?
That's what it said.
Is that what it says?
That's what it says, said licensed. Can't get a Home Depot receipt.
Cause that kind of taps in.
Well, it depends, cause there's leaks, there's different criterias under each leak.
Yeah.
Each.
But that's kind of like jumps in what Ed's saying, then you just get drilled there and, oh, here, fix it here, breaks it again next year, so it needs to be fixed correctly and professionally, so.
Make it, make it a little bit more legitimate.
Exactly, yeah, so that's what I.
But it's a good job, it's a good proposal.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with it, as it, as, as your draft, everybody.
Yeah, the only other thing I wanted to add is that I did include, uh, miscellaneous adjustment, because in the past, staff would be directed by district management to apply credits. So, um, this policy would also include that a district manager would have a limit not to exceed of.
Did you have an A W W A format to kind of put this together?
No.
You, you did it on your own?
Mm-hmm.
Good job.
What do we need to do, any action, do we have to make?
Yeah.
No. There's no action.
It'll be, it'll be in, hopefully in the end of June, July.
Okay.
Tony still has to review it.
Yeah, yeah, what, yeah, my question was just gonna be from my standpoint of, the proposal is to amend the rule solely for that language that's at page sixty-five, called other adjustments, and then put language in there that the board will not policies to implement that adjustment process, and everything else are policies.
Right.
So, yeah, so the concept would be, there'd be a notice of rule development, following the requirements of chapter one twenty of Florida statutes, not less than twenty-eight days advertisement to amend the rule.
So we have to put this out and everybody knows.
Actually, it's a rule development, then there's a notice of the hearing on the rule, and then at the same time, I would suggest we probably have a notice of a hearing on the board to adopt the policies that implement the rule, they could be done at the same time, the same hearing day.
Papers to sell the print.
So again, stat, Leslie has been.
No, good job, Rich.
Working hard on looking, reviewing the rules, and we just wanna make it right.
Does this pretty much cover, I know that's hard to do, but does it pretty much cover all the walk-ins off the street that you hear of issues that we're here to for, we, if we make them up as we go? Does this cover most of the, the problems you've had and seen over the years?
And just for clarification, the concept is to have the rule adopted by the end of June or end of July or June.
We, I'm aiming for the end of June, cause I think they have the fee schedule.
Well, the fee schedule is easier, that's a ten-day hearing requirement, it's all ten-day notice. The rule amendment is a twenty-eight days after we, maybe a thirty-day delay.
Yeah, I, we want it in, in place before the new fiscal, that's the goal.
Okay, absolutely doable.
It's absolutely doable, again, the rates fees and charges is only a ten-day.
Okay.
Uh.
Bought, you bought an extra thirty.
No, it's. What I'll do with the board's approval then, I will.
Are you gonna add Ed's, um, proposal for a camp?
No more than three per ten years.
We will, I will put that in the draft of the utility.
Okay, terrific.
If, if maybe with the boards indulge, I just need your consensus to advertise a notice of rule development amendment to the utility rule to talk about adjustments, if I can get it to the board's approval, at least do that first step, either way.
I'll second that.
So do you want a motion or you just want?
I, I, I don't. Yeah, I'll do a motion.
There's a motion by, um, in a second by, in favor.
It's, it's in record as a work order.
Correct, thank you.
All right, so the next item will be golf carts on Gateway Boulevard and Griffin Drive.
This is a continuation from the last meeting, we finally got the report from Lee County, the board did ask at the last meeting, this board asked at the last meeting if, um, golf carts driving in the grassy area would constitute within the county's right-of-way and if it would be allowed, and so in the background is the response from the Lee County staff, um, and their opinion.
They didn't like it.
And their opinion on that, so. This, this, and I, for the public's knowledge, this started months ago, um, when we realized that a lot of golf carts were utilizing, um, the share of paths, sidewalks, et cetera, grassy areas, which, uh, the landscaping is owned and maintained by the district, or maintained at least by the district through, in our local agreement. Um, so the county had done a study, um, a report and provided the attached report, and ultimately, we, this is the findings of it, so.
Well, the problem, problem, problem is, as pointed out, proof's in the pudding in the last sentence. It says it all. Lee County Sheriff's Office is going to enforce it. Is going to, they, they, they buck this right off to them, they want, they, they don't want to touch this thing, they're gonna put it on the sheriff's office. And somehow, the word's gotta get out to all of the communities, we're talking about hundreds of golf carts. And in conjunction with this, not only this issue and this statement, but just what the legislature did two weeks ago, they knocked out all golf carts to fourteen and fifteen-year-olds, there are a lot of fourteen and fifty-year-olds.
They raised, right.
What?
They raised the age of, yes, yes.
Yes.
But there are a lot of fourteen and fifteen-year-olds in my community driving golf carts around, we allowed, it was, it was approved back then. But the new deal was out, that and this, these people that have golf carts like in Hampton Park, hope they enjoy going in circles. They can't leave the community.
Our youngsters are fifty.
They better not be, it's fifty-five.
But we have exceptions.
So Chelsea.
Sometimes you have a younger wife at.
Oh, trophy husband. That was sexist.
You did that just to say it against me.
So you, I, do you wanna follow up with our detail and update our form and let it know that this is something that just forward this information, be one direction from our board, how do you want to proceed with this?
So if, if you wanna have the enforce, request the enforcement and pay for the additional enforcement of the right.
Wait, hold on, we already paying for it, don't even go there, we're already paying for it, so we just need to tell them, hey, we already paying for this, this is an item that we want you to take a look at.
Till we get this out on the street and publicly knowing what's going on. If you please, you have places that are impacted by this, Gateway Boulevard Deli, you go down there on Monday night. It is, they're everywhere, golf carts everywhere, and there is nobody that can get there without entering out on any violation.
So.
So.
So I think if we're gonna do it, I don't have any problem with what you're saying, but give them thirty days.
So that's what I was gonna say, I spoke with Lee County on a different issue, not golf carts, and they, and, and actually was Lehigh and Commercial and Trucking Parking. And they said usually they go and give thirty days notice, and after thirty days is what they start issuing citations, so I think there's no, no need to reinvent the wheel, let, leave it up to them, so if they want the thirty days and take the thirty days to give notices. We, we, we put.
Why, why we're even talking, why is this?
We, because we had an issue, we had an accident that happened in Gateway Boulevard, the, um, a bike.
We can be sued?
Yeah.
I'm done.
So, so, so leave it up to, so let, let our detail know that this is something that we want them to start looking at. Thirty days, just, you know, if that's what they usually do, thirty days for notices and warnings, Randy can work on something. I, I would just say copy this, Randy, don't add anything else, keep the Lee County logo on.
We will work to push out through medias, um, to educate and to educate these, um, property owners, and then, um, prob, let's, let's shoot for, um, in May, August, July first, um, asking the sheriff to start enforcing and then let them handle it however they wish.
Big brother.
So then you're giving it in two months?
Month and a half, cause we're eighteen.
I'm fine, well.
How long have they been driving on it, since we?
Thirty years.
Forever, and now all of a sudden.
Yeah.
All it took was one incident.
All it took was one incident is correct.
Were they successful in their suit?
Well, what, what they did is we had a person riding a bicycle that says they got ran over by the golf cart and ran out of the way, they elderly slipped off the edge of the blacktop down by the, uh, Boulevard Deli and had to go to the hospital stitches, and it, it just went downhill from there.
But I mean, does somebody sue us?
Oh, no, 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 we're lucky.
Okay.
So we'll start on the month of July, asking Lee County to, um, add this as part of their detail, but in the interim, we'll try to promote.
Let everybody know.
Who, who gets the income from their tickets?
County.
The, well, no, well, now the state has a formula, or it goes to the states, goes to municipalities, goes to.
How much do we get?
I don't want them to think this is driven by that, so everybody but us, how about that?
Yes, that's a, that is a perfect answer.
All right, so then the next item will be the release of the developed performance bond on Prado.
So before we go into this, if there is, I, I would just like to make a comment, if there is a specific request that we would, you would like for staff or the district engineer or district attorney to make of Lennar in order to release this, um, like Bobby mentioned, the thirty, the thirty homes, if we can get some.
Yeah, it's less than thirty, it was thirty homes, but only eleven or twelve, I don't remember exactly how many, but that, that document exists. And I tried to research it for today's meeting, ran out of time, but I will get that, if we can defer this another month, I'll make sure that I get that to you this week.
Yeah, I think we should.
And Lennar's had it a number of months.
We, we, we should take the step, go out and let them know, hey, go and do this, and this goes away.
Yeah.
You, you've stalled it for four years, it's, we, we wanna have a little, uh, have you have skin in the game.
And it won't be new to them, that's the other part, it is not new, Russell Smith sat right here in his room and said he would do it years ago and never did it.
So is that a motion table, Mr. Governor?
I'm sorry?
Is that a motion to table?
A motion to table.
Second.
With the understanding that.
The research, and I will provide those docs to.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Thank you, Steven. All right.
So Gateway Charter School Development Approval.
Yes, so, um, we do have.
I'm just curious for that.
All right, yeah, we do have the engineer of record here, um, if you have any questions, but the Charter High School is looking to expand. Um, they had come to us, we, in, in review of their application, um, Tony had identified some easements with Rick that needed to be recorded, so you'll see in this documents, but we're recommending, um, approval of their application.
Subject to them delivering the necessary easements.
Yes.
Other documents.
It didn't say, Rick, what, what, what is the, uh, what's the facility, they said there's no additional students, nothing, what is it, is it cafeteria or what?
Uh, classrooms? Part of it is, uh, gymnasium, uh, part of it is extra, um, uh, art rooms, stuff like that, so they're ancillary to the, they're not increasing the students, as a matter of fact, they have less students than we estimated back in two thousand four and five, when we originally did it.
We have a new high school.
Yeah.
All right, I don't have anything as well.
Motion to approve.
So we have a motion and we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I do have one question for Tony, you said that you needed, uh, the documents recorded, we provided everything. Doesn't the G S D report these documents since you've received everything from them?
Usually they do, you know, make sure they have the original necessary, we can, I'll double check this.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna know if there's something on my.
All your answers are the like. Hey, Rick, if you can remind me, just me reminding, thank you.
All right, so the next item, the landscape maintenance interlocal agreement with Lee County School Board District.
So this is a longstanding item that, uh, we've been working back and forth with, uh, the school district attorney on. We do have some tweaks that we have to make, uh, mixing up the exhibit numbers A and B, um, but this is in close to draft, like final draft form, um, pending those edits, um, and then once we would approve, we would request of the school district to take it in front of their, um, commission for their approval.
Yeah, what we request is that the board approve this document, uh, as it's in substantially final form with any other finer edits that need to be made, if, if at all, yeah, a, a large part was trying to get the school board to understand what is their property and what is the county's. We finally resolved that.
Who's their attorney?
Uh, it's, it's in-house, council, uh, and so it's, again, it's in substantial final form, just if you.
Uh, yes, I, I.
Attorney, I mean, this is not a new item to us.
No.
Just to agree.
So I had some questions that I think I kind of touched with Chelsea regarding, um, but it's mainly like after they sign the law services, if it's just the roundabout area, or is it the roundabout and part of the sidewalk, right?
But it's gonna define exactly who does what, and that's what you were trying to get at.
And that's what I wanted.
Deeping holes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay, make a motion, we pray.
Second, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And that's one thing Chelsea has been pressing with them is that level of specificity. And that's been.
Um, I do have Randy walking in right now, um, to present this next item, this was, this was a, a thought, um, as part of the admin building. So with that, I'll turn it over to him.
Yeah, so I'm Randy Pinoagua, uh, PIO for the record, uh, we're kinda just seeking direction on what the aesthetic or design that the board is looking towards, uh, moving forward with the monument signs. This one is the water option, keep in mind that these are very preliminary designs, um, so the gateway, um, logo and text all subject to change. Uh, this one has a little water feature, uh, and the two places were along the entrance, that's one of the proposed locations, and can you scroll down to the other one?
Is this option one, it's the water?
Option one, correct.
What is, looking at this picture, I can't tell, what is that metal, is it a sculpture?
No, that's the water.
Oh, it's water.
Yeah, please, yeah, it's kinda hard to see, I'm gonna zoom in.
Um.
Can I see a top, can you just scroll to the top view? The, the water spills out and it's, is there?
Up at the bottom.
Holding pond?
Yeah.
Or a recycling pond?
The whole perimeter, the whole thing is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Waters around the entire.
Yeah. Like a moat, monument moat.
Yeah.
Monument.
So this is the first design and this is with the water feature, the other one is.
About the water.
Yeah, so the water feature we just, I decided to like, reach out to them about was the water fountain that's being installed along the gateway, so we wanted to have something that was cohesive for you guys to consider, um.
Well, you're setting another deal too, which I kinda like, is that Stony Brook had that, uh, uh, entrance up there that has the flagstone type of deal. I, I would say that if we're going to go this route, which is almost a continuation of that, then we need to be looking that at our other entrances such that we, does everybody agree to have that kind of a, a look?
And that's the direction, and. And, and I would say it's, there's even a much larger viewpoint for this. Well, we should have a brand redesign. So we should have a certain style guide that Gateway has, and I mean, my personal preference is to get away from this yellow and green, um, but, you know, cause we have the new admin building, that's a, gonna be a great example of adhering to our style guide, now's a great time to do a refresh and look at setting a standard. So as we do other monuments in the future, we would adhere to that same standard.
I agree.
I, I don't recall seeing the final pictures of the, of the fountain at the intersection. But is, does it, does it have a stone face on it, I don't remember.
I don't believe so.
No.
Is it concrete, striped concrete?
The images that we provided were because, uh, or the images we provided were the ones along eighty-two and the other monuments. So they could have them as examples and kind of just take their own.
But it does have a water feature, so this was, this would be not that big of an item for maintenance or anything.
One of the other things that came up in the interim, if you wanna touch on the community message board that came from Prac.
Yep, and they were seeking to have some type of community board to announce, you know, different events and stuff like that.
President's meeting.
Correct, correct, just any.
On the sign?
Yeah, and they did get back to us after the submission of this item, um, so I have those images available. Again, these are preliminary, but, uh, is that something that the board is willing to consider?
Digital marketing.
I think they're kinda downgrade.
Yeah.
Something that's a nice sign.
Okay.
With a flashing rotating, uh, sign message deal, uh, I don't mind having one, but I put it someplace.
It would be like the high school, the high school has a, a monument and they have a digital board on that as well.
Welcome freshman and all that kinds of.
Yeah, yeah.
And this vendor in particular, um, has worked with commercial, uh, I don't know what those are called. Signs, LED signs with FSW, um, they've done the Hope Preserve sign, I don't know if you've seen that along Six Mile Cypress, so they have a lot of extensive.
Did, did we pay for what we've got so far?
No, 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 these are all completely free. I've worked with this vendor in the past and they got back to us, yeah, that's always great.
Kind of the bark of a tree.
To me, go ahead.
Is the third one, uh, the one that's up there now, is that more similar to what the roundabout sign is? Because this is, this is more concrete, there's only stone at the bottom, there's not stone, you know, all around.
No, none of the, none, like, I don't know if you, but none of these look like anything like the roundabout.
Nearly the only thing.
Is what it's gonna tie the two together, but I liked it that this will tie into the admin building, because remember they will have stones, I don't know if there's gonna be the exact type, but that, and the base of it, so, so we'll have the same thing there.
So the, the, the intent of this is, we were brainstorming, you know, trying to get the juices flowing. We do have the funding for the monuments, um, throughout the district in the bond. Um, and considering our new admin building, we would, we would, I would think that we would want a new sign. And then the other sign location that we could easily start with is right here at the soccer complex, um, that needs to be updated. But, um, we're looking for your feedback and your input, if the Stony Brook Monument and that kind of pebble stone is what, you know, the facade that we're looking towards, we can take that, all of these comments back to Lee Designs.
I like the water.
Me too, I like that, but then I wanna go to Doug's point. You're kinda limited staying with the green here unless you're gonna really redesign this.
When you do a style guide, you can have a primary and secondary and even a, a, a third secondary. So we could have, our style guide is, um, green with whatever the accent, it's white and maybe tan as opposed to yellow. If it all, if I had to vote, um, and, and then you, you know, you could say the stone is our, you know, could be an accent or it could be a primary, so in your style guide, you can, it doesn't have to mean that in order to state a style guide, it has to be stone, it has to be a certain color. You could say monuments are a stone with, uh, accent colors are either white or beige or taupe or whatever. And you could even have, you know, even with your, our logo is, I mean, the way it's been adopted is, it's green with yellow and white trim, so we don't have to adhere to it.
We might wanna reconsider that, as you're saying.
Yeah, or just, you know, so we could incorporate a gold or a bronze or a tan.
And, and, and the horse emblem is different than this one.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's just them playing with the design.
It says Gateway, but it doesn't say Gateway Services.
Yep, yep, that's, that's all why I'm here for.
Think you need.
Gateway Services.
The people going down the road, they know they're in Gateway, but they don't know that this is the Gateway Services District Office. So somehow, maybe that's in a lowercase or something like that underneath it.
I, I personally, I like the, I like one and two, um, even if one was, I mean, the water'd be nice, but I don't know how from a maintenance. Or, okay, and that's gonna be a big deal, but what I, I like the stone as, as being the primary, um, material. I think I like the size of two, cause it's a little bit more grander. Um, three to me just looks like, it's, I, I don't really like that.
Commercially, yeah.
Yeah, looks, looks a little bit generic, and I think if we have the stone, we would incorporate.
They're still in price.
They're all fifteen, sixteen feet, so.
In terms. They're all the same size?
Yeah.
In terms of the location, um, is the median primarily where we wanna keep it, or do you wanna move it to where this image is at?
I like where the image is.
Me too, cause I have a hard time, like, I have an SUV, but the, within the plants and that, you kinda have to like be on top of the pedestrians to be able, not necessarily here, but if we're gonna change and get better, I would stay away from the.
Keep in mind, we have a site triangle visibility that we have to make sure we abide by.
Yeah.
But if, as long as this general location is good.
So people going south, out of this office and pool combination, going south. They will go straight across and turn left, they won't go down to do a U-turn or anything. They'll go south, to go south, they just go straight across the road, turn left.
Yeah.
So that means then they're gonna need to have a much more visible line of sight to the north. Cause they're gonna pull out there and they're not gonna, no place to queue. So that'll have to set back off that road, pretty good distance.
Correct.
And it's intended on being double sided.
It is gonna be double, I was gonna say that, if you're coming the other direction, you'll still see it, yeah.
Um, so if you're not married to the design that the logo is right now, the colors, um, is that something that the board wants to do prior to arranging?
I, I'd also like to know the cost.
I, I think, yeah, I think, I, I, I like one, if I have to pick one, I, I think I like the way one is, but the cost is what will make the difference. Also right there.
Yeah.
Option one.
That different part.
Yeah, two, two thousand dollars for the found, uh, go it on.
And just one quick thing.
You were getting the water and the trough and everything, excuse me Doug, but for two thousand two hundred dollars?
Yeah, it's a steal.
Yeah.
Our work costs more than.
Yeah.
So what I would recommend too is as they're designing this, if we're saying, okay, this is, this is the design we're gonna go with. It would be really nice for them to come with variations for like our smaller signs, so we could say this is our suite, uh, in a future consideration. This is what we would design for the.
That's right, yeah.
For a large sign, a medium monument and a smaller, you know.
And all these proposals are in our budget.
He's going to get to.
They're within the budget number.
If you, if you go with the water feature, will the stone behind it discolor over time because of the water?
That's something that I could ask them to do.
Everything else in here, discover.
Yeah, I would say.
That's. We're, we're having.
Just don't use irrigation water.
Because the rust from the water is accumulating and we have to go back and.
Use potable water.
Potable water, that would be.
Chelsea just shared, we have three hundred and fifty thousand for signs.
For monuments and the bonds.
But, but because we, um, because we were paint, we were pressure washing the signs on Daniels and Gateway Boulevard, pressure washing the signs on Griffin eighty-two. And every time we pressure wash, within a week, there's so many cracks, cause they're not repairing. You have bubbles, like the paint, uh, it's gray paint, cause it's like elastic, it's like a, like the sign is pregnant, you poke it and water just comes out. Literally, that's how, that's, I mean, it is like.
Water just.
This big, so that's why we had that money, but, um, I think.
That's money just for the construction project, you're building, right?
No, it's for.
Alright, I thought.
No, 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 this is for all. Yeah.
How much money for a sign do we have?
Three hundred and fifty, fifty thousand was for design and the rest was just for, to be divided by every other sign.
For all the signs, Bob, everything.
Okay, then it's a different topic, I thought we were talking about specific.
No, no, that's why I was like, this is for all the other ones.
Okay, so if that's the case, I would prefer to go without the water.
Yes.
So do you?
Not because of the cost, but because of.
Well, the other places.
We have plenty of water around here.
I think that's what you guys.
Yeah.
The big thing is, how many of these do we have? We have one, two, three, four, five, six, six entrances, not counting, uh, Stony Brook.
So what?
Six signs that we have entrance into this community, six locations, I believe.
This will be on all of them.
True.
Well, we had, I think if you're gonna put a sign, you put it at every entrance, now it might be different, different size.
And also add the entrance to our new admin.
I only have four, Griffin and eighty-two.
You got Commerce Lakes Drive going into Arborwood, you go down, you got three going across, uh, Daniels. Then you got one over there at, uh, loops around Commerce Lakes Drive on the other side.
That across from your entrance gate?
No, no, down by Worthington, by Worthington.
So for this specific.
It's a church down there, it's in that.
For this specific sign, would you like to keep the water feature out for the other ones?
I, I do like the water eliminated.
Oh, this one, yeah.
Another component that isn't priced out in this is lighting, um, in the past when I've worked with them, uh, standard lighting, just regular light. Or there could be some that changes as well for whatever it is, whatever an event, if it's, uh, Saint Patrick's Day turns green, whatever event.
You might do that at the main one, but I wouldn't do that at every.
Okay.
Can I ask the board one question, so from looking at the, the design, I, I like one with, with the structure. But I kinda like two, where the, the stone is on one side, does anybody have a preference?
I preferred one and three from the, the base stone.
Okay.
Optically.
So.
I like two, if that.
Yeah, I was kinda looking at a hybrid between one and two, like two, but, but the water feature on that side with the, with the moat around it, that's kinda what I was.
So what we'll do is we'll take count of all of our monuments, and if, if, from a staff perspective, we'll take a stab at it from, based on like priority level one, priority level two, priority level three, and have maybe two or three different design options for those, for those.
Two design.
Two, two design options, yes, and we just bring it back.
The town lakes by the tavern, Brown Academy, the tavern and the other building by Subway, are those ours? Cause then you're missing those.
I'll have.
No, I don't think, I'm, I'm only talking about signs that enter the community, not internal.
But to Doug's point, if you, if we're gonna ask the same company, just have them come like the entrances, this is this, but the small areas, like the, the fun park.
You mean like town, town lakes off.
Yes.
That's, that's theirs.
That's theirs.
That's theirs.
I believe, I believe it's.
Same way, Fairway Lakes, Gateway Greens, all of us have our own signs, yeah.
So what I'm hearing is we kinda like, uh, maybe a combination between one and two, the color scheme, we kinda wanna set, set.
I like the color scheme in, in two, that green with the, with the little darker beige or a beige, I mean personally, I.
I'm fine with that.
As long as it's not yellow, I just wanna get.
I'm fine with that.
Yes, so just to wrap up, water feature for that specific location is okay. Uh, try to come up with two. Try to come up with two different.
I just seem to be dry, I don't see a big advantage of the water, even, even.
I can flip the coin on that.
I, I, you know, I don't, I don't feel strong one way or the other, so I'll defer to you three.
I'll go with the water feature, sort of the price, I think we'll go with it.
Into the other, right down the road, I think it's a good idea.
And then try to come up with two alternative designs for each of the smaller ones, okay.
And also figure out how when the water starts discoloring, you can clean them off.
Or whatever.
And so when we, when we look at, so this is a design for, this like for the Commons Park. The other entrance areas, let's say, you know, um, like at the front, it's, you know, kind of, um, somewhat.
Curved.
Curved, so we would take that same uh, same design concept, but apply it in that, as you would do an entrance with.
Kind of like Stony Brook.
Yeah, like Stony Brook.
Yeah.
That's, that's what the idea is.
It's kinda set more for the, the big entrances, because it kinda has to look similar to Stony Brook, right? But I will tell you this, there is, we, two thousand and eleven or ten, we did that. There is a document, I have it at home, that they can, at least for you, that we did this, and it's with stones.
Stony, Stony Brook's only a one-sided sign in it.
Yeah.
That's why.
Yeah.
But it's also, it's on a curve, I mean, that's a, that's a pity, that's big.
So, so there is a document that it has options, so then at least you can look at it in, for the main.
One thing that I will say is this, uh, this is also a wayfinding, uh, sign, so the text of the admin building and then the Gateway Commons Pool has to somehow be incorporated to this, um, where would you prefer the text, the lower bottom, right?
That's underneath.
Underneath, okay.
Gateway Commons, whatever, Gateway Commons or.
Alright, thank you.
Before you leave, Randy.
Yes.
Really like what you've done. Holican is currently considering refreshing our entrance feedback. And I think they're going out to, I could be wrong, but I think they authorized going out to design for, but if these people do it, pretty. And, yeah, I was gonna say, I would like that to go to our landscaping committee.
He, he wants a two for.
And Andrew, Andrew had already given the, that Lee Designs two, to who?
Mark Eversman, I hope.
Mark Eversman, so we.
Okay, great, then they're doing.
So Lee Design was the only one that got back to me, they also got back to me with the message board. I did reach out to, I think it's called Signs by Cranny, uh, they were the people who, um, did the Red Sox sign. Um, they have yet to return any, any designs or.
Lee Designs is local.
And great, great. One, one more thing, um, I think we should probably have a smaller sign in front of the administrative building. Calling out that it's administrative.
I'm thinking up top on, we have the, the, the drive-through walk-around, I'm thinking something up top.
Okay, alright, well, as long as we have.
Or something smaller, I, I see like in.
Like when you pull in and says Gateway Administrative Complex or Administrative.
Well, just have, have a column, like the column that's on here at the end, and then just say put District Office with an arrow on it. In other words, copy this, just that column right here.
I was thinking in front of the building itself, like, you know, so it's.
It's gonna have to have some lettering or something on it somewhere.
Yeah, okay, alright.
But it's in yellow.
This is a fun project.
Um, and I know that the Parks and Recs talked about sign and entrance on the linear park. I like his idea, you know, just your idea to columns, kinda similar to the one that on Daniels.
Hmm.
So I guess if we're gonna do it.
Okay.
Stick with everything the same.
Yep.
Okay.
That's our goal.
Alright, thank you, Randy.
Yep.
Awesome.
Next, we have. F L, FPL Streetlights uh Photometrics.
So I have, I have um Eric Cullen on the line here with us. Uh, Eric, if you just wanna kinda give us a, a background and, and how we got to this point.
Sure. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, wanted to just kinda touch base with everybody today. We've gone through a few iterations with one of our design manufacturers for some photometric layouts. Uh, we've kinda settled in and these layouts were based on some, some typical industry standards, IES best practices, as well as some information that was provided to Chelsea by Lee County DOT. Uh, back at uh late last year, kinda when we had uh approval was to, to proceed with a full-scale design uh from, from FPL for the electrical circuit. What I wanted to call to attention was that we had previously discussed is um, FPL does not recommend specifically uh lighting designs or fixtures. That's why we work through our, our partner vendors such as Acuity AEL. And wanted to take this opportunity to just kinda look at uh the overall scope and design of the project and just make sure that meets the district's needs and expectations. We have actually submitted and it is within our uh internal design group for full cost calculation and scope, which we're targeting to review at your second meeting in July. Uh, with full cost breakdowns, uh monthly costs. Uh, at that point in time, the, the package should allow the board to uh make a decision on the direction that they'd like to go.
So this is just for our, our information right now?
And if you guys are good with it, then we'll direct FPL to continue to full design.
I have a question. So when we're looking at, let's say Gateway Boulevard as an example, when you're showing your lumens or, or your uh photometric span, this. Where you have a place for, looks like it's a street light. Is that just illuminating, is it, it, the street light is illuminating the road, but there's also some cascading down to the sidewalk? My point is, one of the things that we had talked about is making sure that we have uh light visibility on the roads, but also on the sidewalks. The sidewalk is extremely dark at night and I wanna make sure that we are addressing the sidewalks all the way down Gateway Boulevard and basically anywhere there are sidewalks, we want it to be illuminated and Griffin and wherever else.
Yes, so looking, uh, if you wanna pull up one of those, you're, you're absolutely correct. Uh, the particular fixtures are all gonna be a type four pattern. That's what's in our, our catalog under the AEL brand. Um, and as you can see there, that, that's actually a great reference right there and you have to zoom very, very close to see the specific foot handle readings. But that is essentially the, yeah, uh, that is where the fixture would be located and you can see there is backlight, obviously with a, a type four fixture. With the primary light being towards the road surface and then illuminating to the uh, well, considered here north-south, looking at it from this orientation. So, so yes, in, in this instance here, for example, there is gonna be plenty of lighting on the sidewalk and we did try to uh, I think throughout the entire district. Um, as you can see, there's a, quite a bit of backlight associated with this fixture, so I think we're gonna be accomplishing exactly what that goal is.
Eric, what's the height of these poles?
So if you look at the um uh table or the agenda item, actually, let me do this here. Let me see, let's see if this works.
I don't know if you're gonna be able to share.
As, no?
No, I don't think so.
I mean. What interest is it, wouldn't like, for example, when you go into Gateway Greens and go down Gateway Greens Drive and go down West Lakes, those are all uh four eighty service. On, I think twenty or twenty-two foot poles. Are those all going to change? Every pole gonna come out and we have all new poles and fixtures?
So uh, and Chelsea, I would have think that, I assume here that the sharing I just tried didn't, did not work.
Uh, no, we can see your screen. Um.
Ah, are you able, are you able to see this Excel sheet?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So what this, and this is important, I wanted to kinda review this briefly as well. Uh, what uh this does here is obviously there was um the, the full photometric, the way they have to run it is actually, they take a Google Earth um screenshot and then has to stitch everything together. So each page was its own individual calculation point and there was no way to summarize that. So what uh, what Zach was able to do was went page by page and provide here a summary example for Griffin Drive, Gateway Boulevard and, and the major roadways that we're looking to uh have here on the scope of project. To answer your question directly here, there's a uh, we're ranging from twenty-five feet for um, I believe actually some of the, the roadways, uh West Lakes Drive, for example, Common Lakes. Drive, primarily West Lakes, we wanted, anywhere there was residential uh opportunity for light trespass, we really tried to keep the mounting height as low as possible. And we tried to maximize the spacing uh here and, and these are in foot. Uh, we tried to maximize the spacing on uh like Gateway Boulevard, for example, so you can see there's a hundred and twenty-seven units proposed. Uh, along Gateway Boulevard, potentially along Griffin Drive as well, I believe the sixty-two and.
Where'd you see that?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
We're, I'm looking specifically, Gateway Greens Drive has thirty-five lights, West Lakes has sixty-five lights. How many are under, under this new proposal?
Uh, I would have to go back to the plans. We did actually not break it down specifically like that.
I'm just trying to figure out what do, what do we do with these thirty-five and sixty poles we've got right now? Do they?
So, so scope of the project is removing everything. We're, we're starting completely fresh.
And it's, is everything four eighty or is it?
Uh, no, it would not be. Our system operates on, on one-twenty low voltage. Our actual, the, the nodes, the photo sensors on top are, are really what dictate that.
What do you have to do? Put in transformers at all these locations?
No, that, and that's actually part of the design scope that's happening now through our design team is we do to, we do tie directly to transformers. And we're going to try to source uh power from existing transformers to minimize any new pad mount transformers that would be needed. Uh, that'll, that'll lower any upfront uh cost for the project, so there's a good distribution of, of existing transformers available that we believe we can tie into to, to minimize that cost for the district.
We feel comfortable that on Griffin Drive with having the light on one side of the road and that, that sidewalk on the other, that's a pretty good distance that will, yeah, looking at your foot, what do you call them, foot?
Foot handles.
Yep.
That's gonna be adequate.
The, on Griffin, the lights are on the. West.
East, west side.
I, if, if memory serves me correct, um, I believe they, they may swap back and forth and we did that based on residential. Uh, again, trying to minimize residential trespass, so there's.
It's on the west side, so I can't picture putting the lights poles on the east side, you'll, you'll never get.
There's, there's significant forward throw on these and we did take that into, to consideration and, and we can uh, if Chelsea, are you able to, or is somebody able to pull up perhaps maybe uh? An example on West Link from the full plan?
Uh.
Or excuse me, on Griffin?
Well, this is the, this is, I've got Griffin pulled up, can you see our screen?
Not, let me see here if I do this. No, unfortunately, I, no, I lost. I did lose that unfortunately.
There we go.
Ah, yes, there we go. So this particular one, for example, actually is mounted behind the sidewalk, so um, there, there'll be plenty of illumination here on, on that sidewalk. And as you can see, the forward throw of these fixtures, and if you wanna zoom in, um. So I believe that, that would be the sidewalk. Are there two sidewalks there? Is there one on both sides?
Two sidewalks, that's what I was speaking to, so that you got the sidewalk across the street on the.
Yeah, so actually you're seeing about point five averaging on the opposite side of the road. And that falls within what typical guidelines would be uh for, for a sidewalk. And then you can see where the significant drop-off is um with regards to the homes. Keep in mind as well, uh, you can see here uh with the homes behind this particular fixture. We have the ability at no cost to put on houseside shields uh where applicable. So if, if light trespass behind the fixture was an issue for those homeowners, we could certainly put a shield on and those can be requested at any time.
Good, thank you.
So ultimately, we're looking for the board's direction on moving forward to design and actual cost, cost.
Yeah.
Hey.
You need a motion or are you?
Well, be, okay, I'm okay with this one, but I know when they first came in to the presentation, I'd requested a similar initiative, Pelican to consider. And has anything happened from that?
No, I don't recall the board taking action, the board as a whole taking action on that.
Well, it was in this meeting, I don't know, I didn't ask for a vote.
No, it, I, I don't think it was a vote, but yes.
I do recall.
Bob did, did say, does this include any part of Pelican and it, this part, no, this, this is, can we look at the same thing for Pelican?
I guess I have questions, have we or?
I have, I have not, um, and so I'd like to, if the board would, would um, let Bob, let Bob be the liaison, we could work with him or Carol either. Um, we'd like to know the.
Yeah, I don't care, I just want it for Pelican to have the plan to make an informed decision, cause I think it's a good sound plan over here. I'm concerned about the cost. But if you're getting all new fixtures and you know, all new lights and, we could use that, cause we have a number of concern areas in our community with inadequate lighting. And up to now, we're just doing it, you know, ad hoc, oh my, I'm dark, so okay, then we're putting a, a light up, but I'd like, I like this. How do we, how do we, how do we implement this project?
Well, I guess the question is, the idea is to eliminate all the existing.
But I mean, are we selling the electric utility or giving away the electric utility basically on streetlights?
I guess the question is on the existing poles and luminaires and fixtures. Is the idea that we probably take them all down and remove all of them and dispose of all of them?
Yes.
So that, I, I guess the question is, and they've been there like twenty-five, thirty years and the technology is obsolete, dropping.
And all that, but the cost of doing this, if we did it, we'd incur the cost, have a bond issue and do it. Right now, I'm assuming that they're going to do the financing and we just get charged a cost.
They have a great schedule for this, I guess that's the question, that's FPL.
Yeah, what's the, what's the dollar value is what I'm trying to compare apples and apples.
I don't know if it's a lease, sometimes they own the system and then we pay a per pole.
That, that's, that's correct. They own the si, they own the system and we would pay per pole lease. Um, we have a million dollars in the bond. To help pay for this system and I believe early on when we were discussing and reviewing the bond cost, it was gonna be, if we owned and put in our own private system, it would be north of eight million dollars. Um, there are, Eric, and that's kinda the next step is to, to get an actual cost to put in front of you now. It's my understanding, Eric, based off the tariff, and correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, um, the pricing would be based off the tariff and the district, for the most part, would only have to pay the construction and aid of contribution costs to implement this project.
Yeah, that, that is absolutely correct. So within the tariff, what your, your monthly cost will include is the rental of the pole, the fixture. It'll also include the energy and the maintenance on those facilities. FPL will own those, those assets. The upfront cost, which is part of the design calculation that's in process currently, uh, as Chelsea references, contribution and aid to construction. That would be for any new underground facilities conduit and new wire pulled in order to uh service these new, new lights, the new poles and lights.
Eric, is this uh fifteenth revised sheet number eight point seven one five of your tariff?
I do not, that is a good question. I, is that uh LT one, is that the headline rate LT one?
Uh, SL dash one, so what are you looking at, Tony?
So uh SL one is actually a closed rate for new customers as of our late, latest rate filing. Uh, if you, if you're looking at the full tariff, uh, it would be two, two sections down from that. You'll wanna be looking for uh LT one. We've consolidated to basically one lighting tariff uh with all LED.
It's on, I'm not, I'm retrieving it online, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, it's LT one, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, I can, I'll look for that.
So I guess my, my question to, to staff is to Chelsea, at the end of the day, before we're ready to pull the trigger on this, are we gonna have a cost of what we do today? And then having similar, but all new stuff, what's gonna be the cost in the future?
So, yes, the next, we have existing cost today of what we pay, we, we know that. And then uh the next step with the approval of this photometric today, FPL will go in and actually put together a design cost to construct the project to go all new, brand new, everything.
And then, well, aside from the construction, then the forward-going operation.
Yes, we will have a, we'll have a, we will have an accurate estimate for forward costs based on current rates.
We want the same thing for Pelican, don't interfere with this one, don't hold this up, but what do you, and whatever you need from staff to get that, get that started. Cause I'm gonna assume it's a large leap, but if it makes sense to do it here, it will make sense to do it in Pelican, but if it doesn't, hold merit here from a cost point of view. So. One of the big differences is time. This one's teen, twenty-year. That might be a little bit of the. We got some twenty-year-old, you know, Pelican Reserve Boulevard. The other part is, and it is a question, cause I don't know, we're currently involved in a lot of Ian damage. We won't have any of that kinda consideration if we adopt this in its entirety. If anything happens to poles through hurricanes and stuff, that's on FPL, not on us. That's a biggie, okay, the biggie, okay.
Yeah, Eric, just uh for clarification, it's LT dash one with an effective date of January first, twenty twenty-two?
That is correct.
Okay, I can send this to Chelsea to give to the board. Eric, the other one, you're indicating that these are based off a four thousand Kelvin light fixture. Uh, that is a whiter, bluer light than what we have standard in the community, which is kind of a yellowish light?
Yeah, I believe, and I was actually through the community a couple of months ago at night and uh I believe you're probably in the twenty-two hundred range currently. It almost, it looked like a, a high-pressure sodium type of, you're, you're correct. For frame of reference, along uh Daniels, for example, that's four thousand Kelvin and we actually just installed. Uh, I'd have to, I'd have to look, I know there are three thousand Kelvin fixtures in some of the HOAs throughout the community. And like I said in speaking, and I actually have some clarification based on some conversations yesterday. I think for this project, um, it will probably require moving to three thousand Kelvin, which is a slightly warmer light, but still much uh. Much more of a, a whiter light than you currently have.
Yeah, but those of us who have switched over to LED, uh, I think you're right, we're in that three thousand, three thousand plus range, cause it is a, a lighter light instead of that, what I call soft white, yellowish color.
That's correct, that's correct. And, and it's actually being driven by Florida DOT, they've actually just updated their standards for three thousand Kelvin. And so uh Lee County is actually adopting uh those, those requirements.
When we put the LED lights on Pelican Reserve Boulevard.
Excuse me.
The first time we ever got complaints from residents all in the Aviano neighborhood, which is off course Fairway, it's pretty, pretty good distance away and they had to go back in and retrofit all shields, so I hope you've got good. Maybe we had with Hampton Park.
Yeah.
Eric, do you recall what we just put in Stony Brook? I think it was three, three thou? Yeah, we just did, we just um.
I know we did the main Boulevard and I know they were very pleased because they asked to continue with the side streets. I unfortunately don't remember off the top of my head if it was three or, if it was three or four.
I actually, I just emailed, you have your email, I just emailed you the contract for Stony Brook, it actually said that, cause it reminded me of uh another question that I wanna answer Joe and their HRA board. So I sent you the contract there, I should say it.
If, yeah, if you happen to have it right there, it'll be, it'll be listed on.
I just sent it to Chelsea, I was only.
That, that's the old one, we just signed a new contract last year.
But the old one contract, the lights itself is still the same. And.
Okay, I'll look at it. I'll let the board know.
What, what is the action that you're looking for?
Just to move forward to um finalize and move to, Eric, what do you need to go to finalize on the cost?
So, so yeah, what, what we're, we're looking to accomplish today is that the board is comfortable with this photometric. Again, this was done based on uh best practices and standards from, from our uh partners at Acuity. It is not a signed and sealed drawing. Our understanding in previous discussions was that uh the district is not bound by any type of LVO or any other type of permitting through Lee County. And so just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page.
We will be required to get a right-of-way permit?
And we, we will be, that is actually part of our process is to pull all of the right-of-way permits, MOT, everything like that for construction.
From a dollar point of view, the meter's not running yet, correct?
We, we spent fifteen, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars to get to this point.
Okay.
Um, and.
That's still sufficient.
Yes.
Yeah, we've, that, that's gotten us to this point and that'll get us all the way to the full-scale presentation, which like I said, we're, we're gonna be ready, if the board is ready for, we're targeting the second meeting in July.
So I, I moved to keep.
So I, I move to keep moving forward.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second on all favors.
Aye, and I will work with Mr. Gepert on and, and Eric and um trying to get Pelican up to speed with a similar uh project.
Sure you don't want that, Carol? I, I don't mind you.
I'll do it.
Okay, I'll work with Carol. I will work with Carol on that project.
I got enough balloons I'm carrying. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Eric.
Thank you. I very appreciate this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Eric.
Hey, he's getting very. You're getting good.
Okay, so next. All right. Twenty twenty-four budget discussion.
Or do you, do you want to drive?
Um, no, you can, you can drive. I sent, I dropped a folder in the board folder on the shared drive. Uh, it's called uh, budget dash LL. It has the updated operating budget in there and some of the staffing changes that we made the other day.
Which one do you want to go through first?
Uh, maybe just start at the top.
The, the copy.
So pull up the, not go to the gateway budget template, do up twenty twenty-four as a five fifteen. So the version that's in the board book was at about eighty-five percent. Um, this one is, I believe, complete with the exception of getting some of the payroll expenses. I had to get that from Stephen and Sonia. So anything in orange I have to get from Infomark. Um, anything that's in yellow is new. Uh, so if you want to scroll, I'm looking at a version on my computer too, the same one. So I'll make any updates on my sheet uh as we're going through this. But um, find it.
Hold on one second. Are you sure? Because I just picked this up. I love it.
Yeah, it's a different one. The one that, the one that's in the board book is not the same one that we're looking at.
Okay, because Georgia just print this up for me at eleven today.
Yeah, I made these changes on Tuesday, but I did not update any of the files in the board book. I literally dropped, I dropped those in the board folder while you guys were having the board meeting.
No problem. Is anyone, you can print what she has for us now?
Yes.
Then at least we can have notes and have the updated version.
Yes. Take a five minute break and, oh, you get that?
Yeah, if you guys don't mind, would you mind?
Yeah, I was like, has everybody want a big one like this?
Yes, you can. I can't read the little ones. You can't read the big.
All right, so let's go ahead and take a five minute recess.
Some of us are senior citizens.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to print the whole thing.
Seven things.
Real estate closing, something like that.
Or you looking sure?
Small businesses and stuff.
All right. Laura, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so let me pull this up. I printed out eleven by seventeens.
Yes.
For them. I'll pull this over here. Can you see what I have up on the screen?
Yep.
Okay. So.
So none of the, really nothing as far as categories should have changed on this from what you saw uh in your board pack. The, the lines would all, I know maybe like one or two new lines from what's in your board pack. Uh it's just the dollar amounts are changed because I was able to go in and do all the shared costs which show up under the admin. So like the administrative services and the operational administrative services, those are updated from what was in your board book.
We're not looking at board book at all, Laura. We're looking just at.
Yep. So I'm just saying, I'm just telling you this is what's changed from what you looked at before. So if you're wondering what they did.
This until you've done first the staff allocations.
We, I have, I have the staff.
You've got to have.
They're, they're done.
Get to this.
Those are done. Well.
Yeah, scroll.
Proposal from staff is done.
Yes.
If you'd like to switch to that and start with that.
Well, but what my point is, is that right off the bat on administrative services, we have substantially dropped, for example, supervisor fees. What did you do that caused that?
Supervisor fees, that's you guys.
I understand, but why, what took? Basically, what was the theory behind moving fifty percent of that allocation from admin? It has to go someplace. Where does it go?
There were extra fees in there because of the duplicity of the board members. So that won't happen this next year. And then that sixty-four eighty that's in the general fund is the twenty-seven percent that they pay of your cost. So if you look at the Pelican line for that and then the, on the four hundred tab, it's different. It's not the same for all of them. But that's why, because uh we had uh basically seven board members kind of last year. So there was some extra costs. But that makes sense.
Try that again.
Yeah.
Seven board members, that sound like.
Well, because the, because in, in twenty-two, when you guys had the election, there was some overlap. So the supervisor fees were higher than they will be this next year because you're set at your five people for this next fiscal year. That's not going to change. So I took the forty-eight hundred dollars.
Because it was an election year?
Yes.
Because it was election year, there's an overlap of, but it's still no. You're starting, starting, stopping at the same time.
Yeah, well, what I did, I don't, I, I took. I took forty-eight hundred dollars. Well, I took forty-eight hundred dollars, which is as much as you guys make, times five and then times twelve. Uh so if you go to the allocation tab. Uh.
They don't, they don't have it on.
Oh, it's not listed out on there.
All we were doing is, is that if you go to the allocation tab, that's got a management or a board, and then you have all your staff, all of the percentages are allocated. What I'm getting tears out of this is that twenty-four times five is what? One-twenty. We're saying that admin supervisor oh-one must be ten percent. Where did that come?
No, no, the sixty-four eighty is you guys. Supervisor fees is the board.
But it's the same number it was last year. It's, it's ten percent. Last year, if it's twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand out of a hundred and twenty is ten percent. So it must have been ten percent. So that means we must have used, reduced it down to like five percent for this year to get sixty-four eighty.
I didn't take a percentage. You could see my formula up in the bar. I took the forty-eight hundred dollars times five board members, times twenty-seven percent, which is the oh-one share of your cost.
Okay, that's where I'm, I guess I'm coming up. Where did the forty-eight hundred come?
That's how much you guys get paid a year. Each, each supervisor has a maximum of forty-eight hundred dollars in a calendar year that they get paid. There's five of you. And I took twenty-seven percent of that for the oh-one fund because that's their percentage of the shared costs.
Well, if, why, was it twelve thousand in twenty-three?
I don't know. I would have to look.
I think, I think that's what we're talking about. There's, why is there discrepancy?
Gonna be saying every. Say it and why would it change? It's gotta be the same. There's, the numbers didn't change.
Well, the, the budgeted number and the actual expenditures, it probably did.
Not, not looking at actuals, only amended budget.
Well, we have like, look right here at actuals. We have thirty-one fifty and we're halfway through the fiscal year.
The actuals have moved target all year.
Yeah, but it's, the, the actuals for that particular line aren't going to change. So the budget is inflated for twenty-three.
And you didn't, you deflated it for twenty-four?
I made it accurate for twenty-four.
In other words, it was a bad guess in twenty-twenty-three.
Yes.
I can understand that. Okay. But, but the theory was though, is, is that the supervisors allocation, it's just tip of the iceberg. If forty-eight hundred times five is twenty-four thousand, right? So twenty-four thousand is the total for the year. We were saying last year that the oh-one account, oh-one account was fifty percent of our cost allocation for just supervisors.
No, it wouldn't have been because that would have been twenty-seven, that twelve thousand was twenty-seven percent of whatever the supervisor fees were for last year's budget. That is a shared cost that the oh-one fund pays twenty-seven percent of. So if you look at the oh-four or the four hundred account for that same line on the supervisors, that's, that's not right. Oh, no, it's not right. Yeah.
Okay, so make it.
I did my math. I, I showed my calculations.
If I take the supervisors' fees for all four accounts, oh-four, oh-oh, well, all accounts and add it up, it can't be more than twenty-four thousand.
Correct.
No.
Correct.
And so sixty-four eighty says that now this oh-one account is essentially twenty-five percent.
Twenty.
It's twenty-seven. That's their share. Yeah, it's, it's twenty-seven and Pelican will be fourteen.
Before it was fifty.
And the four hundred is fifty-nine.
My, my point was that.
Spread them over different line items. Okay.
I, I allocated the same as all of the rest of the, the shared expenses.
Look here at the screen. So if, this is Pelican and she did the same formula, forty-eight hundred times five times point one four, because that's Pelican's share.
Correct.
Of the shared expense. And then if we went to, if we went to the enterprise fund, it should be this, it should be fifty, what is the fifty-some percent?
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine.
The, I mean, this, so this one we need to correct.
Enterprise is fifty-nine, is that right?
Yeah, I'm fixing it right now.
Think that was about fifty-nine and forty, something like that. Okay. I can relate to the fifty-nine, twenty-seven and fourteen. I'm okay with it.
Oh, that one's not. Oh, no, that one's not right. That you're, my sheet says fourteen, one-sixty on the four hundred account.
Yeah, this one's wrong.
Fourteen, one-fifty-one.
Yeah, that's right. Go to the right one. You're in actuals. You're in the actuals. I'm like, it's right.
Ninety-six and now it's going to be.
I just worked backward to twenty-four thousand minus thirty-three, sixty-nine, minus sixty-four, eighty. It's fourteen thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-one. So enterprise should be.
Where are they?
One-fourteen, one.
But the point is, is these, all of these services, these percentages that we're seeing down here on this oh-one account, district manager fifty, assistant district manager fifty-five, these come from a sheet that where those calculations were made. That's what I guess I'm.
Right. Yeah, and if you change the cha, if, if the board decides to change the allocations on the staffing sheet, I have it set up in such a way that it'll automatically recalculate and I can just change, I can update the numbers.
I'm passing it out. So, okay, then let's start. Do you guys want to start with the staffing?
Staffing, yeah.
This is the same sheet we looked at on Tuesday.
We order in dinner? This, okay, so this is the results of the meeting Tuesday and the revisions. The proposal. Yes.
I did not go in because it's, it's a pain in the butt to update all the percents on the operating budget. I wanted to wait. And once you guys finalize this sheet, I will go back and update the actual staff dollars in that other operations one. I figured staffing is a separate discussion from the rest of the operations expenses. So once you finalize this page, however, you believe the allocations to be fair and correct, I will go back and update the dollars on that other sheet, but I did not change any of those.
I made, I made the statement at the meeting Tuesday that, for example, the Pelican Preserve admin is ten and they've got twenty-five hundred homes or whatever the number is. Stony Brook has seven-hundred-seventy-seven and a zero. I would see.
Yep. Let me explain how that, how that works. The way, those calculations are based on the amount of time that staff spends. It's one of the staff's time that is spent in each of those areas. It has nothing to do with households.
Okay, so then that means I'm, I'm going to interpret the other way. Then that means there's no time going to be spent whatsoever by any of the major staff next year. None. Zero.
I don't think that's.
Me and Stony.
That's a joke. That's, that's absurd. I mean.
Now, it would be totally different if, if they took over and we already knew that, then yes, then I'm totally okay with this. But because we don't know, I think we're under.
So would you like?
Again, the.
I, I can change the numbers. I'm, I'm working live in the sheet, in my copy of the sheet. So whatever, I've already saved a new copy. So whatever you guys think is fair, I will update the, the sheet.
Well, I'm just asking the question. You're telling me that you will spend zero time next year on that account. Zero.
I, I know for my time, I can speak for my, I can speak for myself. Uh my time personally, I should not be spending any time there at all, with the exception of maybe one hour a month to go over their uh reimbursement request. I have a very hard time charging them for five percent of my time when I spend an hour a month looking at their stuff.
I got one. I'm just, I'm just trying to point out that with, other people smarter than me are going to look at this and think, what, who, you ever try to pull wool over my eyes here? That didn't happen. Make it a half a percent. Yeah, Laura, I. But it's got to be, it's got to be reasonable. Just a question of looking from the twenty-three to twenty-four. In twenty-three, under the first five headings, Stony Brook paid fifteen percent. Correct?
Yes, but they were not using their O and M agreement either. So staff was a lot more involved.
Okay, but last year they paid fifteen percent. And so this year, they're going down to five percent? And that was a five percent reduction simply because of the O and M?
Somebody said something I didn't hear.
Yeah, it was Warren.
Warren said they do most of their own work.
Yeah, they are doing their own work. That's why we aren't, I'm, we're not processing invoices. We have, I think, three invoices we process for them on a monthly basis. Uh we're not, we're not doing anything in there anymore for them.
That'll reduce by one if the mainscape contract goes away for their request effective June. So in, in from, now, per the O and M agreement with Stony Brook, any large projects have to come through the district and that's why Randy's time is at the ten percent because he would have to be processing through the contract and following up with the vendor and make sure of insuring.
Same with public works and, and the project manager, because if there's projects, they'll be involved in those over there.
Last year it was five percent and five percent and now it's zero. So last year it was zero for project manager.
We'd have, yeah, we'd have one.
We didn't have that role last year.
Ten percent for administrative assistant. And that's not even on here at all. That's correct.
That's because we had the Stony Brook Advisory Committee meetings and they don't have those anymore. So Georgia doesn't have to spend any time preparing for meetings for them.
So let's go in, in order then. So Chelsea, what, what is, so Laura, we know that is, you know, one hour a, a month, her cost of fifty-seven dollars is six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars a year. It's not even a half of a percentage. So I'm fine with that being zero for Laura.
What, what are you talking about?
Laura. Because if Laura's.
What, for what line? Where?
Are we just looking at Stony Brook right now?
Yes, for Stony Brook.
For Stony.
Okay.
Fine with that being zero because if you, if you're saying you're spending one hour, you know, twelve hours a, a, a year, that's six-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars out of your salary. I'm fine with that being a zero. That's just me.
Less than one percent.
That's what I'm saying. It's less than half.
Okay.
So I'm fine with Laura's being zero. For Stony Brook.
And, and Georgia's time went away entirely. And Julie Fitz's time went away. She was five percent last year. So that she's.
She's got, again, two invoices. She's got, again, two invoices a month, maybe five, ten minutes of her time once a month. I can't justify charging them for that.
Okay, I, I'm just asking questions for clarification.
Yep.
So last year they had fifteen percent between Georgia and Julie and in twenty-twenty-four be zero. But this.
Correct. Yep. It's correct.
Well, I'm kinda with you, Ed. It's.
I mean.
We disconnect.
I'm fine with zero, but I'll hold that to the zero. You know what I mean? Like, which is not how you operate business. I mean, I can.
We're, we're not trying to rape them.
It's, it's, listen.
If they call, we don't answer.
We're, we're good, we're, we're good with whatever you guys want.
Yes, they, they, whatever, whatever you decide is what I'll put in the sheet and that's how it'll calculate.
Alls I want is a straight answer. Are you gonna be doing zero work this year? Cause I'm, I, I would only wanna hear the word come out of your mouth.
It's not gonna be zero, but it's basically zero.
So that's what, that's why, that's why I had to do the math with for Laura. So it's six hundred and eighty-four. That's the cost.
It sounds like between Laura and Julie. On the hours allocated would be about one percent. It won't be zero. They will be doing something.
I can, I can, that, at least that passes the test.
I mean. Would you like to add one percent? I, I don't think, I think what we're trying to say is it's not zero. It is something. So between the two, put one percent.
One.
On Julie or Laura.
Half a percent on Laura and half a percent on Julie?
No.
No, I would just do one percent on.
I'm doing one.
Okay.
One or the other.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Laura, I'm just gonna type it in so they can see.
I'm, I already did. Yeah, I'm doing it on my copy too.
So we'll do. Is one percent?
Oh, I thought.
I did one. Just type a one in there. It'll go away. It's hidden if it's zero, cause it gets too hard to read.
I'm assuming out of the fifty-five.
I know the computer slows dirt right now.
I actually dropped off the, um, the VPN because it was so slow.
Okay.
So then.
Okay.
So the prize has to go. Oh, but it's not here, right?
We're staying with Stony Brook, right? Now we get out.
We're doing Stony Brook. So my sheet matches yours right now.
Did you put the admin general fund to fifty-four percent then?
I, I reduced the general fund for both Julie and myself by one percent.
Okay.
So twenty-nine for her and fifty-four for me. Or fifteen, forty-nine, I mean, for her, sorry.
Okay. Do you wanna tackle all of the Stony Brook and then?
Well, yeah, let's just stay with Stony Brook and then move.
I didn't have anything yet.
Uh, project manager last year, of course, you didn't have that position, zero. And now it's gonna be five percent. That contract. You okay with that? Sound reasonable?
Sounds reasonable.
A landscape lead, Vogel, five percent.
Does Stony Brook have any project?
Unless they do exceed a, a large project, that's when that would be.
And he would be in there for administrative purposes only. It'd be like a consultation if they have projects and they need input, that they would reach out to him. Same, same, uh, logic that we use for Pelican.
Fine with everything else. Okay, for, I mean, for Stony Brook.
Yeah, the only, the only other change for Stony Brook is, is that we're now quitting five percent for landscape in Vogel. Year past, it was nothing. I'm okay with that, if you guys are okay with it.
So, uh, this would be.
Well, if they're gonna do all of it, then I would, if they're gonna take over as soon as June fifteenth, everything, I would have it as a zero for Jim. Because they're taking, that's, right?
Yeah.
They would. Don't have a project manager now.
It's really hard to hear. Sorry. You guys can hear in the room. I can't hear from my office.
Sorry, Warren.
I know, Warren, you have a big inside voice, but I can't quite hear you.
You knew what happened. Uh. We don't, we don't know what the full job description is gonna be for a project manager. And someone from Stony Brook. Proton manages the project. I manage, manage a lot of the projects myself because there was no one from Gateway that could help out other than, you know, some support stuff. And we handled most of the stuff ourselves coming through here and only come down here to get paid or to have them, you know, process the invoice.
Well, that's, that's part of it is that they'll do the, put out the bids and all those kind of things.
We've done all that ourselves and.
You put out your own bids?
Yes, yes.
Let me, let me clarify. So historically, because Stony Brook Advisory Committee, they, they handled it with, through the board and then with some assistance from staff. As the O N M has written, any large projects have to come out of this office. So now that's saying oversight and I mean, we could delegate that to, to the HOA, but there still has to be some staff on larger projects oversight in the field.
So we have to have that as a placeholder.
I don't think that five percent's unreasonable.
No, no, no. And, and we used, uh, Keith when, when we were, him and I were working together on the sign project in, in Stony Brook. And, and stuff. So he was adding a lot of stuff and helping with some of the RFP stuff we had to put out. But it wasn't a whole.
We do Pelican, right. Not a lot, but it's key.
Yeah.
So the five percent, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm fine with everything except for landscape, read the five percent. Because if they're, just because as of this twenty-twenty-three, they're taking over everything that I don't think they should pay that five percent. Like what is.
Well, that, that hasn't happened yet. And as soon as it does, I'll take, I can take it out.
So I, it, we're okay either way, but Jim could be a resource, a good resource for them if they needed it.
I won't speak on behalf of them, but I think they wanna, given the amount of emails that we all read, I think they're paying for it. They wanna have control and do it.
And the O N M agreement allows that.
So I, I would, I would suggest to get that to zero. That, that's just me.
I would, I would agree with that. And here, something from on this. Now I got my Pelican hat. If Vogel's, we're gonna be paying five percent of his salary to him, the same vein. But only because he is a resource to us. Contracts, everything is all handled by the landscape workroom of his back. They do it all. He is a resource. So from that point into, that is here. And five percent's not a lot of money.
Well, the issue is, is if.
It's somebody to call.
Yeah. And, and the issue in Stony Brook is that they take over the, the transfer. It's all a moot point. It's all zero.
Well, and Laura said that.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's the goal.
So are we taking Jim's time out of Stony Brook or are we leaving it in there?
We're gonna keep it for now.
For now, yeah.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
Alright. So we finished Stony Brook for the staffing?
Yep.
Yep.
Good. Alright.
Wanna do Pelican next?
Sure.
Bob ones.
Okay.
Uh, so these percentages under admin here, the ten percent, fifteen, five, thirty and twenty. These are approximations of the time that was used this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Right? So I think that some of these are a bit high for next year because the committees are now established.
All but what?
No.
Safety and security, safety and security, Ed, not, not for this purpose. The bills are still being paid by KW for safety and security. But everything else.
But next year.
Next year.
When this starts, it won't be.
Correct.
So, and I, I understand that you guys spent a lot of time this year helping. Put the legal in place for, to make everything legal, sunshine, everything for all the committees. And I know they've been meeting a lot because they've kind of been starting. But, um, I know traditionally Pons only meets once a quarter. And I think it's Doug's intention to go back to once a quarter, not have it every month like they have this year. Landscape, now that Mark is, got, got his feet on the ground and he's really starting to move.
His team's in place, yep.
Yep. They, they've been having sometimes two meetings a month. And I understand you guys have been staffing it and everything. But I think they're gonna go to every month, maybe even take the whole summer off type thing next year. And, uh, and, cause they're gonna have their projects in place and things are gonna be rolling. Uh, safety and security, I'm not so sure. Maybe they will still meet.
They're still struggling, yep.
Yeah. So is, what would be your suggestion as to, I, I don't, I, I understand there's a lot of prep time for the meetings and all that sort of stuff. But if Pons only meets once a quarter and landscape only meets once a month and maybe even takes the entire summer off. Like June to September. So that's only eight meetings a year. And let's say safety and security only has one a month because that's kind of what they're in the mode of doing right now. Are we still gonna need these percentages? These seem high to me.
Laura, do you wanna answer? Do you want me to?
Um, I can speak for my staff. Um, as far as Georgia, she, there's a lot more involved with her and Pelican besides just the meeting prep. There's a lot of back and forth. She does. A lot more handholding than I'd really prefer for her to be doing. Um, I mean, they're all, I'm just gonna say they're all adults. And she shouldn't need to remind people multiple times that things are due and have to ask for things six or seven times. So that's where a lot of her stuff comes from. Uh, it's having four committees versus one. Um, it, Julie, now that we're paying the bills at, at the office, she spends a lot more time doing the bills. I mean, I may be willing to come down on some of their time and maybe a little bit of my time as well. But if you get, if my time goes down, you're gonna get only what. What I'm allocated. And I am giving you way more than fifteen percent of my time this last year. So, um.
And, and I appreciate, uh, that I know. And we all appreciate that, Laura. Because you have helped them mold themselves and shape themselves. But going forward now from October first on, I don't think they're gonna need that kind of base support.
Care.
Well, Julie, I can say Julie right now, for the landscape committee, we're averaging probably five. Five things from a mariscap every other day. So fifteen to twenty items from a mariscap a week. Like invoices, quotes, things she needs to process. And that's just a mariscap. That doesn't include all the rest of the committees. So with all the work that they're gonna be doing over there, I am, I'm not as willing to budge with Julie's time. Cause she is spending a very large chunk of her time processing Pelican stuff.
So from, from my perspective, I feel like these numbers are, are fair.
Agreed.
Like Laura said, we've, we've spent an exorbitant amount of time this year and, and rightfully so, cause we wanna, we wanna do it right. Um, but.
I will not disagree with that. You have.
And these, these numbers are actually lower than the percentages that the ladies and Randy calculated for themselves for the last three to four months on time that they've spent on Pelican stuff. I took them down.
Yeah, Laura, I wouldn't disagree with that at all because obviously, uh, twenty-twenty-three was the learning curve. And you're exactly correct. The number of follow-ups and, uh, return messages back and forth with Georgia was incredible. But they now have learned.
No, they haven't. I, I disagree. It's still happening.
I don't hear any more kickbacks from Pons at all. And the last couple of things I thought with Mark have been going very well. If I'm listening, they're telling me. Possibly with safety and security. I'm still willing to admit that. They're learning how to crawl. They're not walking yet. But I, I see the level of support in the future at being comparable what Pons was in the past. Particularly as, as Kyle said, quarterly meetings. We hope all three of them will be there. I'm not gonna, you know, necessarily argue about whether it ought to be twenty or thirty or whatever. But we went from zero to thirty. That's a pretty good chunk. And I don't think that I would recommend, I'd be more comfortable with twenty.
How about twenty? I was gonna say, so we keep everybody else, Laura, the same because I, I, I still want Laura to guide and, and more so you guys can continue. You know, the, the same path that you were this year. So we keep Laura as, everybody the same and we just lower Georgia to twenty percent. It would be in line with Julie.
Philosophical comment. And I don't understand the differences between the district manager and the assistant district manager in what they're doing for the benefit of Pelican Reserve. Other than the fact that Laura is our liaison, for lack of a better word, appoint person. But. I struggle with, with, we, we shouldn't have both. We ought to have one or the other. Uh, I, and I kind of feel this way even about meeting attendance. When both people are, when two people are in a meeting, this goes back to my corporate days, from the same department. Somebody shouldn't be there. The person that comes to the meeting ought to be equipped to handle whatever comes up. But to have two people sitting in the same meeting here and saying things is redundant and as far as I'm concerned, wasteful. So I would like to see that number.
So, well, well, if you, if we take either Laura or Chelsea, that number would just go to the other person?
Well, no, I'm, I'm comfortable with Laura at the fifteen. You know, last year she was at ten. So that did go up. In, in lieu of the, you know, the additional things. I, I'm, I personally just struggle with the district manager at ten. Because I think, I don't know why I need both. I mean, I only need one.
Do you always go, both of you to the?
No.
No.
So what's the difference is what I guess.
The five percent.
We, uh, they're different. Granted, again, that twenty-twenty-three was a total, totally different year. We had Keith leave, um, a lot of the projects. Um, Laura and I kind of divided and conquered and continued and tried to continue them on. Um, there were times I met Jen with Dean out there about a str, the street light. Um, we've had some traffic things, projects with F T E continue on. Um, I mean, eventually those, those types of projects, it would be more Andrew, but we were in this weird. You know, paradigm, but, um.
I would say to take it down to, to zero for Chelsea would not be reasonable. Um, she does do, she does, I mean, I think five would be.
Five.
So we do five, five Chelsea. We have fifteen Laura and then twenty.
And fifteen for Laura.
Yeah.
For Laura.
And twenty for, um, for, uh, Georgia.
Georgia.
With that. So I have five fifteen, five twenty, twenty.
And five for Randy. Cause they do, do contracts and.
It is five, yeah, five percent for Randy.
Okay. And then Julie. And she's basically pays the bills and stuff, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm okay with that. We've given her a lot more bills this year. She was ten percent last year. Twenty percent's okay.
You've easily doubled her percentage.
Yeah. And, and, you know, again.
You're comfortable with twenty? I was gonna suggest fifteen.
No, I'm okay with the twenty because the other part of this whole thing is, you know, we had all of our transition to our, our subgroups. And yeah, we have a lot of crap thrown on staff this past year.
Oh, okay. It changes already. Okay.
But hopefully we won't.
We won't let it for it. I think we're gonna get better. I'm hoping next year they're gonna come back and they're gonna say, we're getting too much. We're gonna cut it back. That'd be great. Okay.
So we're good with that? Five fifteen, five twenty, twenty?
Yep.
Ten, ten, five.
Okay, I'm okay with the, uh, public works director under admin. I'm not sure what the project manager's gonna do. We don't have any projects, but.
You have projects.
Well, I heard KW was doing the one I asked about tonight, but okay. Uh, alright, we'll leave it there.
Well, and part of, part of this is, you know, the whole point of these subcommittees is, is to work with a staff member. On if they do have a project and it was, if it was more pro, like the, the traffic calming devices and the Veneto drive.
Yep, yep.
All of that should be, should be with a project manager. If not, the.
And I, I agree with that. I want the focus to be on the subcommittee, but they gotta have the backup resources here. So, okay, we gotta pay for that. We're using them. Okay.
So the ten, five, 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 that's good with you, Bob?
Uh.
You know more about that stuff than I do.
Yeah. Uh.
The, the maintenance workers and stuff.
Yeah, I, I don't know who they are, but okay. I don't think we've gotten a lot out of them in the past, but that is gonna change next year. So. We're okay. We're gonna be making a proposal to add a maintenance staff person on the budget over here.
Oh.
To offset what we're currently paying in Pelican with KW.
I, I don't have any.
So I'm okay with the rest.
So Bob.
I'm okay with everything.
Bob, do you, do you want to add that maintenance person in here now? So Laura can calculate the, um.
I would like to, but I can't because P pack's kinda blessed it. And we gotta get agreement on the O N M with the community association. So it's kind of a vision.
She's coming to help.
Push the red button.
It's nice. Yes. Amazing.
Star, he's going, I don't know why it didn't work. He's banging.
I feel like I'm, I feel like I'm missing something.
You are. Warren's just, Warren's jamming out on his.
Oh.
All the other, all the other ones, I'm okay with it.
So, do you wanna put a placeholder in here?
You could put a placeholder, but I.
Yes.
It's too many, too iffy at this point. There's a lot of things that have to come together, but the board ought to be aware of.
Let, yes, let's put a placeholder in place.
I haven't know to add that in there.
Okay.
And that would be, is that gonna be a hundred percent dedicated to Pelican then? Or is that gonna be a fifty-fifty split?
No, a hundred percent.
We don't need a full-time.
Just so you know, Chelsea, that's gonna mess up my whole sheet.
I know, I know. I'm just.
But I save my own copy.
So for them, so they can see it.
Okay.
Yep.
Going back to.
I'll get that added in.
Yeah, I don't sincerely believe that there's enough work for a hundred percent. You know, fifty percent of a person, absolutely.
Depends on, depends on, yeah, really, I mean, the safety and security.
I think we can share that with the district. If you can do fifty percent, I don't know if you could handle the other half man somewhere, then I'm very comfortable with that. Okay.
Half a person.
So we pay fifty and we haven't?
So we pay fifty and we haven't?
I do fifty percent public works, maybe. They're up there, yeah.
For seventy percent of a maintenance man for the last five years. And I'll be damned if I can find out what he did for us, other than put some signs in. Now, I'm sure he was used, but that's a different issue.
All right, so we're good with staff?
I guess when they don't have it anymore, we'll find out.
Find out. That's right.
Okay, so back to oh, one.
Okay.
So this staffing sheet now with the addition of that extra position or with earmarked or whatever for Pelican, you guys are good with the percents?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you wanna go to oh, oh, one, the general fund?
Only thing that came up on the general fund that we had talked about the other day is where are the, uh, the E and I payments are not on this page. It's on a separate page.
Oh, we're done? Are you guys done with staffing? I thought we were going oh, oh, one staffing.
We already had that done from this.
So they said they're good with the staffing sheet, I thought.
The whole staffing sheet, you guys are good with enterprise fund, and I thought we were going by fund.
No, I was fine with everything else.
I was fine with everything else.
Okay, good, good.
I already closed mine.
Excuse me.
So if we go to the oh, one, the only thing we were talking about is where's the principal and interest on the bonds that are associated with oh, oh, one? Are they on a separate page?
They are on a separate page. Um, the bond funds are actually funded by, that, they're not on here. There's a, a three oh seven, a three oh eight, and a three oh nine that, that they're handled under.
So the only thing that would be here then would be the capital reserve payments. And where is that at?
It should be at the very bottom.
Last page.
Uh, nope, it'd be at the very bottom. Well, I don't know how yours printed out. It's actually online at four forty-nine. It's at the very bottom.
Two seventy-nine is it?
Four, four fif- four forty-nine is the capital.
Things, yeah.
Oh, it's not, it's on mine.
This one, Laura?
Uh, yes.
Right here on, if you look up on the screen.
Right under the hurricane cleanup.
The last page.
Other fees and charges.
Reserve, yeah, it's two seventy-nine. That's not.
No, I know. I didn't change it because you guys were having some really good discussion on that, um, on Tuesday. So I figured we would, we had finished the discussion today and I will, I will change that based on what. I didn't.
Yeah, that two seventy-nine, that's the number that the consultant was telling us should be two points a million.
We're still working on updating the CIP.
Okay, so we don't have that.
Yeah, so that one's, that one's not highlighted in green, so that means I'm not done with that one yet.
So we typically have a budget or a workshop the first meeting of the month. So I figured we would have the CIP done if not sooner than that to get it back out to you based on your comments that we had this past Tuesday, two days, two, two days.
I had hoped to get it done today, but I got, I, something came up. Yeah, hell of a mishap.
So are we still talking about the other fees and charges page? Is that where we are?
Yeah, I'm going down the other ones, just looking for things that were major changes, and I haven't seen.
Yeah, wait for Flavian. The, uh, under the other fees and charges on the very last page, it's got my attention. And they're putting in a hundred thousand. We are proposing a hundred thousand hurricane cleanup.
Emergency.
Yeah, it could be a hurricane, it could be anything, earthquake or whatever. Uh, we had a hurricane Irma in seventeen eighteen, and then we had about five years with nothing. I don't think we should be putting money in the budget with that myself. And if we have a catastrophe somehow, then a special assessment will stand on its own merits.
Let's do this.
Yeah.
Let's hold that item until we get closer to.
Our true number?
True number.
I'm okay with it.
Because if there is fat to trim, that's an area we can trim.
I'm okay with it. Put it in there. We're okay. Yeah, all right.
I said, keep that for your high water version, and that can be something you can take out before we adopt.
Yeah.
Maybe we all need to. I don't know. I'm optimistic.
Okay, so then if, if I look at the very last page, the total expenditures, the amended twenty twenty-three budget was four million, six fifty-six, zero forty-eight. And you're saying that this year your proposed is four million?
That's not com- that's not complete. I'm missing some information yet.
So we can't even look at that final input.
Yeah, don't pay atten- don't, don't pay attention to the total. It's more, it's the line items at this point.
The four million six is accurate, Carol.
Yeah.
The unknown is what accurate.
There's, there's some gaps in the twenty-four budget yet.
This is like.
And.
So, so Laura, based on your years of extensive experience and all that sort of stuff, is this number going to be substantially higher than the four million, six fifty-six, zero forty-eight?
Uh, based on what's.
About the same amount.
Based on what's missing from the budget right now, it should be about the same as what it was. Cause there's the numbers that are missing should not be substantial.
The capital reserve is going to take it substantially above that number.
Depending on how we fund it, yes.
Based on how they are right now, yes. But with the, I'm looking, you're looking at. Yes, with the, with the information that I have missing in here, anything that's in orange that I don't have filled in, I don't expect it to, that it shouldn't be more than that four point six five. So no, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be considerably higher.
At another million dollars or something like that.
Not for what I'm have missing in here. That would be if you decided to fund your, the only way that I can see it becoming another million dollars would be if you decide to fund your, your reserves, but substantially more than what's shown on the sheet right now.
And insurance is likely to be a pretty good hit.
I already filled that in, so.
It was an orange on mine.
Uh, that's a different kind of insurance. That's the, that's for our, I have to do the, uh, employee insurance.
Okay.
So the liability insurance I already did, and I put a note, I increased it by, uh, I can't remember. I looked at this like two days ago, so I don't remember. Um, I would say I did thirty percent. It's usually towards the top because that's a shared cost. Yeah, so, so. I know it's in there. I saw the liability insurance. Uh, it's probably easier to find on the allocation page.
Okay.
Okay, so not, wait, so.
I raised it from, yeah, last year our budget for the liability auto and property insurance was, um, if you go to the allocation page up, you got it right there. So it's thirty-seven, two eighty-nine, and I, I basically doubled it just to be safe.
It's not there. Where are the line items that have nothing in them, that have nothing, no yellow, no orange, no nothing, and no numbers?
Like dog station, uh, dog wash station, the replacement canopy.
Under Parks and, where, uh?
What page?
Parks and Rec.
Page four.
Five.
Three.
Right, we're under Parks and Rec.
Nothing, nothing.
Parks and Rec, sorry. What's the question?
All of those line items that have nothing on it.
Well, no, the header, the heading is there. If you look across payroll, last year seventy-eight thousand.
Going down, way to the bottom. Go to the bottom.
Five sixty-four. Look up at the top.
Point fifty-eight, five sixty-four.
Twenty twenty-four, one fifty-eight, five sixty-four.
Are you talking?
We're not talking about, we're talking about the bottom.
Right here.
There's no, I don't know.
Line items with no cost.
If you look, they were not funded in the twenty-three budget either.
Yeah, but those are the initiatives that the Parks and Rec Committee saved into it. So if this is the high water one that we wanna send, then I think we should have prices there.
But here's the thing.
I don't have a cost.
Uh, yeah, before I add something to the budget that just came through the committee, I think we need to review those items. I think there should be, so I'm not just gonna say, hey, committee, give me your list, and then we're gonna automatically in- include those in the budget. I think we should go through those before we put them in the budget.
They're here.
We have them.
Yeah.
I guess we should go through them first before we get to the budget. Well, yes.
Well, from a, from a high water, to your, to your point though, from a high water, right now, it's in, we could put it in.
Yeah, but that, you would never, just arbitrarily put something into the budget at this point. Even, even what is staff has put in.
A million?
Yeah, yeah, that's why.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We should at least have a first pass, and I'm fine if we say, okay, let's put this in. This is a real, this is a good idea. Nice to have. We'll put it in, you know, for further consideration, but just to blindly put all this stuff in, I think right now is, is irresponsible.
So let's go up then from.
Well, how much of it is capital versus operation?
I would say, I would say that this, I would say forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars could be ops compared to capital.
That would, that would be one I'd look at. The rest of them, but put it in the capital pile.
Yeah, put the forty-three thousand.
Yeah.
All right, so Laura, um.
That's what I do.
Yep.
Yeah, the Victory Gardens for the fun park. It's estimated at ten thousand. We gotta plug that into Parks and Rec. And then this bocce ball, cornhole, horseshoe.
Wait, where is that?
Upgrades up here.
On, on the list.
On the screen. This is what they've come up with and how they got that.
But where, so the bocce ball, is this, is this net new?
No, it's, it's here. It's the bocce ball courts that are here.
We just built those already.
No, 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 to do improvements, to add a shade structure, to do a wider walkway in the middle, to add benches around the court. They're memorial.
Yeah, but why are we spending money here? We have a whole nother park area that, I mean, this is like some philosophical conversation.
But the commons is gonna be under construction for the next two years.
Well, you also.
Yeah, and there's, there's a covered pavilion that's ten feet from the, from bocce. So I'm just saying.
Which it needs to be repaired. It's in here too.
Well, again, those are all capital. I'm talking about pure operating.
Operating ought to be in here.
It can come later.
Things like the amphitheater, pickleball, basketball, volleyball, cornhole, all that's supposed to be over at the commons. All of that should be shifted till year or two from now.
Twenty, twenty-five. But the issue is, we have those facilities here right now. What they're trying to do is improve them. I don't have any problem with any of that, but it's not operating. It's capital.
You don't have pickleball anywhere.
No, we have, we have bocce ball.
The, the stuff that we do have.
I'm talking about stuff we do have.
Okay.
Those things that we do have that need to be upgraded, that's a capital item. Let's just hit right now, operating items and be done with it. And get those included, if we have any at all.
I, I agree with that.
I do too.
So do you wanna run down this list and make a determination if it's operating or capital?
Yeah, which one, well, that, that's why I'm hoping, did, did they identify and differentiate the two? I would hope they would, knowing that.
But we, no, they didn't, but it's, it's easy. So start dog park, concrete bathrooms and storage, that's capital. Natural turf, I actually don't believe you need any.
But it's capital, either way.
Well, we don't need any money there. It's already there. So the cover bench area, that'll be capital. Picnic tables. Picnic table, I could go with operation because we already have them there. We'll just get new ones.
Generally, anything under twenty-five hundred dollars would shift ops.
Okay, so then what, so, okay, so then that tells you fencing, twenty-eight thousand, that's capital.
The idea is they're taking the dog park from the soccer fields, moving it over to the fun park as a separate area, right?
Yes.
That, so that's.
And then where the dog park is now would become additional parking.
All the fencing come down as an additional part to.
Thousand dollars.
All the way down.
Max.
For the.
Operating.
Considering that you need additional parking, you probably need.
Everything else is capital.
And there's actually additional area.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So that's what they're thinking. I went and I counted the parking spots. To do it, you can get a hundred and six in the current dog park fence area, which is not that many. When I came over here and I saw how many cars are parked.
That would be significant though.
Right, but so, so, but we can go use the dog park, plus there's additional area all the way down to the tree. So we can utilize almost double the amount of the dog park is, and there's still areas left over that will be untouched. So.
Well, you might have twenty thousand dollars at the wildest of operating in that whole pile. Everything else is capital.
So tou- touching.
I don't disagree.
Touching on this, the, the whole parking, we had, and we had in the bond funding for a maintenance building down there, which would just be another extension of the parking, and we, we talked about potentially having, um, actual storage down there for, for these, um, recreational leagues to rent.
Taint strippers and.
Taint, yes.
Yeah.
And it opened up.
Part of that maintenance.
Paint and all that stuff, yeah.
So Ed said about twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
I, I can support that. It's a good.
So I, I think that part of this plan is excellent. Move the dog park over to the fun park, improve the fun park, put your parking over here. Build your storage over here if you want to.
Oh, you need to, because it.
Then, then take those numbers and throw them back in your capital reserve, so we know what numbers we gotta have to, to make that happen.
Right, so two, four.
So we're talking twenty thousand dollars for, from just section number one?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so Laura, you clear with that?
Not exactly.
Okay. You, we can, you and I can work on it.
I'd go to a general line, like, like maintenance and repairs and put twenty thousand in.
I was gonna say make it a.
Make it general.
Yeah.
Make it general.
R and M, and then just make sure you call it out on the note, Prac Initiative, number one.
No, R, maintenance and repair, fun park. Then, then however how it gets decided by them, you do it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's not.
So from that, from that top line there, you're saying to do R and M fun park?
Twenty thousand dollars in operating costs for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So then additional parking at the soccer, uh, field.
All capital.
That's, that's all capital.
Okay.
Capital.
Medicaid, okay.
I don't even know what that is, but.
So that is gate, so at the front, front on soccer drive, there'll be a gate over there, just very similar to the, on eighty-two, there's a, a, a park there, uh, that will close like at nine o'clock at night, it will automatically close. But if there's somebody locked in inside, you, you have sensors that you can drive out. You can get it in, exactly. So then that will eliminate.
Actually. It's been a problem in the past.
So, cause then will assist us in not.
Yeah, okay. No, no, you had me at.
Right.
Get out, not get in.
There was Chelsea, by the way.
Okay, do we really need all of these pool upgrades?
Well, I thought we.
Yeah, why, why are we?
We don't have to do this because we got the twenty grand in there.
It's all capital.
This will now go into the capital.
That'll go into the capital.
CIP. The twenty grand covers all the operations with this.
Yeah.
That's what I.
The issue is asking about the pool.
Well, the pool's, pool's a separate budget line item, so we wanna throw in ten grand for the pool, these, these nominal pool upgrades.
Yeah, I think, I think I would because you, you need.
It's two eighty-six.
This is capital.
Ops, under ops, we would have put in just ten grand.
I'll think ten grand.
Ten grand for that. That's, that's fine.
And then the rest.
The rest is capital.
Yep, okay. Laura, you good with that, R and M for the pool?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds like we're losing you.
Honestly, the rest of the stuff.
It's all capital.
We, we, we don't need to put in this year at all, even under capital.
Well, we'll, we'll have.
No, well.
Well, it's, it goes on capital, it just what year you put it under.
When you spend it.
But you, when you spend it.
It's still on the list, but it might be three years out. Yeah.
So then number five, all, all of this would be capital?
But this is going in the area where you're gonna have construction.
Well, that, that's right, but it doesn't, you put it in capital, but you don't sign the year. You sign the year, you're gonna take it out. So if you've got it and we got three years, you don't put anything till twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, what we're saying is.
But you identify it.
Could, like, for the common area, just hypothetically, could we even do anything next year because there's already construction? The argument was you could possibly, you might, there might even be an avid, an, an advantage to doing it. So we, we'll, we'll determine it. No. The answer, who's ringing? Oh.
So.
Never mind.
So, put all that in capital and then just, uh, you guys figure out what year you think it's gonna be spent.
Talking about that. I've been at it for years. I don't say anything else.
Just golfing.
Fifteen years of people.
Okay, so we're clear, then everything else goes to capital on this.
Yep.
So we will, again, as we're updating, updating the CIP, we will work on plugging the rest of those items in. All right?
Okay.
Anything else in the operating? General fund?
Uh, I have the rest of the um budgets here, so if you wanna do.
Can I ask one question before you go?
The, have we already allocated? Are there any additional improvements to this building we were looking to do next year?
No.
Okay.
There there's the, there's the main, the the utility maintenance building, that's gonna be right here.
Storage.
Storage.
I'm assuming that once, once we, once um well, once some of the staff comes out of that building and the boardroom is empty, there's plans to turn like the boardroom into a a temperature or climate controlled storage area, but that can't happen until we're done with the admin building thing, so it won't be next year.
It means nothing.
We're gonna have an indoor pool in the boardroom, just so you know, that's my, that's my thing.
Missing out here is the capital reserve and we can't do that until we have the.
So I have, I have notes here, if you want to go to the O O two fund, is it, are there any other comments for the?
Yeah.
O O one for operating, okay, so here is the O O two. Pelican. And I got a bunch of papers here. Pelican. Pelican, pick one, pass her down.
Let me know when you're ready.
Ready.
Like I can't hear anything, so I'm just waiting.
You wanna start from the beginning, or do you just wanna highlight the, I mean, just the general, huh, you got these numbers?
Uh, the operational admin expenses are all from the shared expenses uh from that allocation tab, so that's just your fourteen percent of all of those costs. Um, the payroll is just laid out a little bit differently, it's like this across all of the budgets now, I broke them out into salaries and merit increases, and again, this will change now that we've made some changes on the other sheet, I need to go in and update the percents and the dollars. Uh, but we broke them out individually, so you can see exactly what you're paying for each position, that had started with the twenty-three budget, but um it wasn't across, it wasn't across everything, so that you'll be able to see that once I uh update those informa- that information, again, I need, orange means I need something from Infomark. Um, a couple of the lines that were in there were moved up above, uh, the agenda and document hosting, I broke out its own line, it's on eighty-nine, Chelsea's way ahead of me. So basically, where you guys start is uh with line one thirty-eight, this will be the committee stuff, so everything above that is a shared expense, with the exception of the Pelican Preserve Committee Minutes, cause that's, that's just you guys. So, um.
Safety and security is where you you all would start.
Safety and security.
Yep, so those first two lines already existed in the in the district's budget, but they, I moved them from underneath the admin canopy above down into the safety and security, so those are not new, they just relocated um in the budget, so that'll be, because they're being, or their safety and security is overseeing them, I moved them under theirs, so it's just a reclass on the budget for those two.
Is that the one?
And that's why they have existing numbers.
The H O A on the back page dropped way down.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so then um from lines one.
This is as was blessed in the last P pack meeting, correct?
Correct. The only thing that changed on here was I added that holiday lighting line.
We found.
That's the only.
Reconciling with with uh K W.
Yeah, that's the only thing that that changed from what when P pack saw this.
And then again.
And I just took a, I took, I don't know what um I don't know what the admin fee from K W is gonna be, I have not, I did not get that from them, so the thirty-five thousand dollars that's on the H O A line, that's down a little farther on line one eighty-nine is um that's the irrigation costs. So that's why that's so much less, because um last year it included all of the bills that they were paying for the district, as well as the administrative costs, so it was considerably higher than what I'm projecting for next year, because those bills are moving over into the district's budget.
And then the same thing with the emergency comment about the forty grand, that we'll leave it in here for high water.
Yeah, it's it's subject to change, I recommend leaving it there.
Yeah, just just a question on the stock fish and I have a gate cleaning, but what is the benefit besides the algae, because I know we we, I don't recall we ever doing that here, and if it's something that's beneficial over there, and we can implement here, that's a very small cost.
We buy fish, state of Florida. Put it in our pond, buy palafia, pond help, not the, sterile carp.
Okay.
So we buy sterile carp usually once or twice a year, and we put that in there to keep the ponds clean.
And people fish.
I beg your pardon?
So, and people fish too, don't they?
Well, that that's the second part of it.
Yeah.
We we got requests from residents for game fishing, now our covenants excluded us from doing that, so we had to go to the time uh what's the name of the people that developed this?
L N R?
No, before that.
W C I?
With W C I, and we went to the W C I and said, we have residents that want to fish, if we pay for it, are you okay? And we get the waiver from the the docs, and we got permission to do it, so from last nine or ten years, we also stock game fish, and purchased from the state of Florida. We have both fish going in our ponds.
And you guys very rarely actually spend the full ten thousand dollars, but it's always been ten thousand dollars.
I agree, we keep it at that steady amount, we've got money to do.
Somebody said something I didn't hear.
Sorry, the linear park, stop, you know, for recreational fishing, because sometimes I knew, I know staff does have a hard time with people parking by the lift station over here, like in areas that they shouldn't be parking, so if we have a a central location, it's not like the fish cannot go somewhere else, but um, you know, I just tend.
Does that pond not go anyplace else? Because we found when we put our fish in, we lost the first.
So that's what I was saying, not.
That's why you see a charge for fish gate, we also put in gates and then we have to clean them every year.
Yeah, so but I for the whole thing for ten thousand, i- if one of the.
You have to. If you've ever seen those ponds on the linear park.
They're full of.
There's, well, and they're full of just overgrowth on the outside too, so latoyal, latorals and outside growth, so it would, if if the philosophy was to truly do a linear park, which we've been talking about forever and ever.
Got a fish there.
We, there's gonna be some additional.
Well, in the, and the Parks and Recs have that, but it enters sitting area.
Yeah, we have no latorals in our fishing zones, we keep them out, that's intentional.
I think.
The area is designated as a fishing zone.
You wanna do a pilot project?
There's no latorals.
Pick pick one of the lakes and.
Yeah, the first one has the last, least amount of latorals.
What the what?
The first one of the linear park, I I would just try to keep it at the linear park.
Okay, so.
It's a nice clean lake right up here too.
Yeah, but. I thought about that, but that's why they do their vote.
Sailboat, sailboat.
You don't fish on on boating day, of course, but.
So Bob, is ten thousand dollars a good budget number?
They've never exceeded it, and Laura has given the ponds work group the discretion, if they need it, to move from one category to another, so that's a good.
They very rarely spend the ten thousand dollars.
So.
Yeah.
Beg your pardon?
There's a cat, there's like a bunch of catfish, yeah, those are actually invasive.
Yeah, maybe some.
So, do you wanna put ten thousand dollars in the ponds? Budget for a pilot, so Laura, can you add ten thousand dollars for stockfish, stockfish?
Carp, all they do is. Put all this.
Well, the sterile carp you can't tag, the piles are too small.
Oh, yeah, they won't eat the latorals?
No, they they won't eat our lures.
No, no, I'm talking about the.
He's talking about latoral.
Oh, they do eat latorals.
Because they're used for latoral control.
Oh, yeah, they, yeah, we liked that one.
That's what happened, we put the latorals in.
I'm gonna put nine thousand dollars in Stony Brook, all the latorals we planted.
Okay.
Yeah, but but add the stones stay.
Is there anything else?
Don't eat the stones.
For Pel- for Pelican, now, alright, I have Town Lakes.
The alligators do. You're absolutely right, I haven't seen too many errands, but sure that.
We got eagles who are getting the fish in the offspring.
Alright, that's Stony Brook, I don't know why I skipped Stony Brook, but sorry, Warren, go into Town Lakes, cause it's a single sheeter.
This last one?
No. Stony Brook and then Enterprise.
This looks very.
So Town Town Lakes doesn't change, the the only thing I did change this year is we actually got mainscape to commit to a cost to maintain uh or what they're, or what they're maintaining in landscaping over there, so we're gonna appropriately charge uh the Town Lakes Fund for their mainscape costs, we, they hadn't been prior to this year, so they are on on a monthly basis getting charged for taking care of the landscaping now.
You got a lot more columns on this one than you did on the other two.
Yeah, I'm fine with this one at the moment.
Stony Brook?
Yep.
Alright, let me.
Keep them coming.
Take one, pass it.
Killed a few trees, it's fun.
And again, the Stony Brook, that's the salaries when you guys get that far, that's gonna change, cause we changed the allocation, so that'll change.
Or did, did you add in the what Stony Brook provided?
I did, that's where those numbers came from, the only thing that I plugged in here, um I, the utility fees, the landscape contract, which at the time when I did this, I didn't know which way they were gonna go, so that can come out if they decide to do that, and then the street lighting.
The landscape contractual service is pending, so so everyone knows this, Stony Brook has, um the H O A has requested that um they take over all of the landscaping responsibilities, they being the H O A, take over all the landscaping responsibility within their gated community effective June fifteenth, that means they pay for it and they oversee the maintenance. So Tony has to opine on if and if a private H O A entity can pay for and maintain G S C D D assets, so.
So I did, I did leave it in there, just again, high watermark, I'd rather have it in there and be able to take it out, but then assume that it's gonna go away and then it doesn't, so.
No, the entity can, it's in agreement, and insurance indemnification, and number of other, we can have a landscape maintenance agreement with that, yes.
Okay, so that is something we would have to implement prior to the June fifteenth effective date of them taking over the landscape responsibilities.
Okay, now I just wanna make sure, did did they reach out to their attorney and and can they do that, cause the last thing I want is for for on our end, say, yes, we can do it, and we move forward, and then suddenly their legal says, no, you cannot do it, and then now it's too late.
I did not ask if their legal opined on it, I just got a note from the Stony Brook H O A from um.
Saying, we want it all.
Okay. Who was that, Chris, was it um?
It was Chris, Capello.
Chris Capello.
So.
I saw.
So are you saying that hundred and seventy-one thousand is going to totally come out?
No, the forty-five will stay because that's uh irrigation.
Of the landscape.
No, they they said irrigation is included on the email. That's utilities, that's our water bill. That's not gonna go away, they still have to pay us for the water they use, they're just gonna just take over the maintenance, like the irrigation and stuff.
So the only the forty-five stays under that line item?
Well, for now, I'm leaving the hundred and twenty-six in there, especially for the high watermark, we can take it out after, unless you feel differently, but if I take it out and something happens, and we end up having, we can't put it back in.
I mean, Dan, what's the area that is considered um our our property that they that they say they're gonna maintain?
All the rights of way of all of the streets.
All of it.
All of the landscape.
From back of, back of lock to the road, yep, everything.
And we'll have to delineate that, be specific as well as have specification, that'll be attached to the.
What what about around the ponds, tops there?
Well, the lake maintenance easement is already our responsibility if we own them, right?
Correct, wait, 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 lake maintenance?
If if we own the tract, Tony, correct me if I'm wrong, if the tract of the pond encompasses some landscaping, that tract is dedicated to the district, we are responsible for maintaining that tra- that pond and the associated landscaping. If the L M E extends, the lake maintenance easement extends, we we, it's an easement, it's not ownership, so we don't necessarily have to, we don't maintain the easement, but if it's our parcel piece of land, we would be responsible for maintaining it.
Okay, who's gonna cut the grass around the ponds?
Yeah, again.
I did a picture, I'm really, I'm gonna get pissed about this here. The only difference between this and Gateway is is that the ponds in Gateway are owned by the C D D and here they're owned by uh U S Home, no, U S Home.
Yeah, but this.
They're dedicated to the.
This actually enjoy.
Yep. Instead of all of this right here in Stony Brook on this pond, and they're all exactly the same, that all belongs to U S Home, that little strip right there belongs to the H O A.
Correct.
But there are easements in favor of the district, because the lakes are dedicated to the district, and the landscape maintenance easement is in favor of the district, and that's the dominant.
Why, why in I, over here in Gateway, with exactly the exact same deal, I'm paying for the maintenance of the lake management easement and the grass, and somebody else is paying it here, why?
Is the lake maintenance?
Cause I'm gonna turn in all my, I'll I'll give the C D D all of my lakes then, and it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander.
Is between the lake maintenance being motor.
The lake maintenance easements in mine.
Okay.
Owned by my association, but they were given to us, but my question is, why are they not here?
Well, the lake. An easement is.
I'm talking about grass.
What I'm talking about, talking about.
In every pond around, every easement zone around the Pelican Ponds, there's grass.
Yes. Grass is not maintained and taken care of by the district, it's done by the H O As.
Right.
Of that that community.
That's why mine's that.
Okay.
Except, except for the ones that have houses and businesses ordering and they take care of.
And but no, my local association takes care of it.
Yeah.
C D D.
Same as I've got.
Yes, we. Just like what you are.
Why isn't it this way?
I don't know that it is.
That's, that's what, that's my point.
Should be.
So I received an email this morning from Mr. McCulca stating that the H O A has been paying to maintain all of the grass around the ponds historically.
That's correct, they should.
They should.
And he.
They should.
He, it can pass along the email, he was alluding that the district should be paying for that out of the O O one.
No way, no way.
So uh that's what I'm gonna work with Tony.
Cause if you do that, then I'm just.
You got everybody.
Again, you'll, I'll give you all mine.
I I concur with that, we've had this conversation with regards to another community.
Yes.
In that, yeah, the lake maintenance easement is for the purpose of accessing the lake for reconstruction, repair, installation, all those activities.
Treating the water.
Correct, the underlying fee is still the property owner over.
Correct.
Has the L M E encumbering.
Correct, is correct, yes.
So.
We're on the same page.
Yeah.
So uh in addition to that, though we had requested at least for this area, which is on Pebble Brook Boulevard, all the lakes that there are on Pebble, not residential, this area is taken care of by the district. But that's the one that Chelsea and I look, and those are.
Exactly the point I'm talking about.
No, this, this is actually H O A, so we see like the, this is the lake that you talked about, in between, in between this and and the lake, and look, this is a lake, so the lake is U S Home, but in between here and here, it is actually H O A property, so there's a lot of the complaints from the residents, this stuff is not getting done, it is actually on solely.
The H O A to do.
Russ, correct.
I think that's track B of Stony Brook, that's huge, and that question, that question has come up year after year after year, and my answer's always been the same, that's the H O A's responsibility, because it's, it it's dedicated to the H O A. And Tony, I'm not gonna suggest you make a map of that, doing a Pelican, until you get Pelican done, when you get Pelican done, if anybody wanna do it for the.
Any grass, any grass in common area not bordered by a house is the H O As.
So that, that is the biggest, that was the big landscape change with Stony Brook, was when we were reviewing all of the maintenance areas, the district was paying for out of the O O four fund to maintain all of those private H O A areas.
That's the right place, you know, you know, they got that, you know, they got the mowing the grass, you got the watering of the grass, it's in that same area, I paid, I picked up the ban for that too, irrigation.
So O O four shouldn't be the appropriate place to fund it.
O O four is the district's fund.
For Stony.
No, that's H O A, that should be solely H O A.
Okay. I won't get into that.
No, what what she's talking about is is that we're talking about where we have road right away, that's the only place that the O O four comes in.
Pelican's definitely separate. Pay for bowing the grass on the box. What what we're talking about is this massive tract, I'm gonna track B one, all that blue, it's buffer, and it's a, and it's owned by the H O A, and it's dedicated to them as a buffer.
Correct.
I think that's the area.
Yeah.
So.
Is that correct, that's my understanding?
Yeah, we we just gotta separate out.
Oh, you got.
In that road right away, that's a separate.
So going back to the O O four budgeting, um the S, the the Stony Brook H O A for the O and M agreement did provide their their budget numbers by their required date, actually before the required date. Um, we did tell them that the utility, they they had, Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, they had chosen to try to mark off a lot of the utility services.
Correct.
They, that they could not, because that's an actual, you know, cost of utilities, um but for the most part, I believe the.
You can see that the little number off to the side there, the three thousand, the fifteen thousand, that was the numbers that I got from them for those line items, and so I just totaled all of that stuff up, and that's what the O and M reimbursement line.
Okay.
Only other thing I saw on this one is, and it's too too early to do anything, and that's that capital reserve issue.
Laura, did you add an emergency, emergency line item for this?
Uh, I missed it on that one, I'll put it in right now.
Okay, alright, so is there any other questions for?
What do we wanna, what do we wanna fund in that?
Yeah, just ten thousand, and it, that's the one where we need to know.
Revenue reserve, okay.
Yeah, we need to know what that capital reserve projection is to even talk about.
And what is it covering?
Yeah.
Well, I have some in there, if you look at the lines above that, there's the ninety-three five for the roads and sidewalks, the forty-four thousand seventy-five for the gate, the forty-three fifty from the entrance monuments, and the fifty thousand, so that's already there, those are in there from the capital reserve study, there's those a little easier, cause it's much smaller.
Already in.
Yes.
One fifty, one ninety, nine twenty-five.
Oh, okay, that was that, okay.
And what do we wanna do for the emergency fund, how much do you wanna put in that?
I think last time we discussed about doing a percentage, and so I think we need to pick a percentage across all funds.
Or what?
As long as you're not reducing the Pelican percent.
The.
For emerg- no, 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 the new proposed emergency.
The only thing that you have an exposure there is street signs, streetlights, what else is there that can go wrong? What else is there can go wrong? At your emergency on, uh, where you only have a road right away, the only thing that you got there that. The guardhouse, okay.
So I don't, does does the board wanna pick a percent that we just do across all funds for this emergency funding proposed line item?
With the exception of Pelican, cause they pick theirs and it's considerably higher than what we would choose.
But assets are so much of our asset, the percentage, but is. Is the assets that we have?
Or or we can go back to like Carol mentioned at the last meeting where we just do an average of the three months or of. Uh, three months of.
I'll go with that.
Okay. So Laura, are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Do you, here is the Lake Bank Restor- any other questions for Stony Brook? Here's the Lake Bank Restoration Fund.
There really isn't anything for you to do in there. That's all, yeah, estimated costs.
Information, nothing new.
Yeah.
Information.
That's just. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I said, this is just, these are the SRF projects, so there's really nothing.
So does anybody have any questions about this? It's pretty straightforward. All right.
Is the, I I don't know if it's about this or not, but is the. Lake Bank Restoration. Promoters are gonna have to pay next year. Did increasing appreciating? If we borrow money in the past year, that's gonna hit the tax bills this year.
Laura.
We we did, yeah, this is all the SRF stuff, so, um. Uh, we, I can't remember how much I asked for reimbursement for, but the fact that we didn't do anything for a whole year. Is gonna cause this, I'm assuming to go down a little bit, but I think in last year's, for the fiscal twenty-three, so the current year budget. The amount per household that was, um, out, that is associated with this was like ninety-seven dollars or something like that. So it wasn't very high.
What was it in twenty-twenty-two?
I would have to look. I don't, I wanna, I think it was like a hundred and three in twenty-two and it went down to like ninety-seven for twenty.
If we know it's gonna go up in twenty-four, five, I don't, I think if you're misleading, to drop it this year. Even if you don't necessarily need it, I'd keep the funding at the same level. I'm not increasing, but don't.
Well, no, this is based on the amounts that we actually, this is based on the amounts that we're paying on the loans. So it would be for how much we've, um, we're gonna be taking out and we're expecting to to borrow from SRF. To do the Lake Bank projects. That's what, it's P and I calculations, so that's where Steven gets his numbers.
He can't just arbitrarily duplicate a number that might be in excess of the needs in order to keep the tax bill sane? I I think what Laura's saying that we do not yet have a borrowing. That would trigger the assessment.
Well, what I heard was we were gonna go down.
Well, but no, we still had, we still had expenses this year, so I mean, we're still making payments and I, we just closed out. Gosh, I wanna say it was like maybe December. I sent over the fiscal sustainability report for the last batch and and we have lakes now that they're working on, so there are gonna be expenses. It's just, I don't expect it to have a big impact. I mean, even as we're making payments, it's just, it's P and I, so.
Can't have any conversation on this till we get.
And they're, they're, they're very small. It's a zero percent and yeah, it's a zero percent, so.
So this, all right.
It's generally been about a hundred and ten dollars a household.
So the next sheet that was handed out is just the the allocation of shared cost and that's, we we've really touched on this, but this is. Where all of the numbers for the funds get pulled from, so this is just so you can see.
Percentages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then last but not least, we have the enterprise fund, so I will pass that along.
Are these, um, on the shared costs, are these percentages? The general fund, twenty-seven percent, Pelican fourteen, enterprise fund fifty-nine percent, are these the same as last year?
Yeah, they've been the same the last. Twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three, they've been the same.
Oh, nevermind, Tony doesn't need it.
Tony says he doesn't.
All right, Laura, you wanna go ahead?
Sure, uh, the revenue numbers that are at the top that are in green, I got those, Leslie contributed those based off of billing. So I need to get a little bit of, uh, I need to get the numbers for the all of Gateway for, um, how much revenue we have. Infomark, again, anything in orange, I still need to get from Infomark. So the total on this budget, I do expect to change. But again, this is, doesn't affect the tax assessments. This is funded by water bill revenue, so. Leslie gave me the connection fees and meter fees, uh, since we're almost built out, there's not, there's. We're getting down there as far as that, you know, unless we have a lot of replacements, that won't be in there. Um, supervisor fees, we already talked about, uh, payroll taxes I need to get from Infomark. Uh, any of the stuff at the top under admin services and operational admin services. That's all that fifty-nine percent of the things from the allocation tab, so that's all the shared costs. Um, the only place where we start plugging things in is. When you get down to the utility services line, I want twenty-six, cause that's, that's still all shared costs there. It's just normal operating things like computer paper, uh, I did move the uniform costs. Uh, the safety equipment and the boot allowances out of the shared costs and under each department for this year. So like utility, the utilities staff, all of their uniform stuff costs is paid under their budget. And the same with Parks and Rec and Public Works, theirs is actually paid under their budget. I took that out from being a shared expense this year. It was too hard to allocate. Um, cause it wasn't always fair. We had a lot more Parks and Rec people this year and the utilities, the common county, I hit Javi for it and it was just too hard to balance. So I broke it out. But these numbers I worked on with, uh, Leslie and Austin. Uh, so they did, they did all the heavy lifting on this. I pretty much just looked it over, questioned anything. It didn't make any sense to me. Plugged in notes were either I received them from Leslie and Austin or from numbers that I put in. Um, if it's green, it's been verified and validated. Leslie did break out some of the costs this year, which is good to be, had talked about doing that to help track things and find out a little more where we're actually spending. The money for the testing, which is why you see those two new lines. And with Cartograph now, um, we do have six tablets in the field currently and we're gonna be buying three or four more. So all staff will have it, so that's why she's got the cell service broken out separately. So that will not be a shared cost anymore. That's going right to the utilities department. So they're gonna pay for that out of their own budget, um.
So remember when I told you Tuesday about that? Uh, study report that was done on the tank back in the back, that was about a hundred.
Line ones, yep, one seventy-nine right there.
Yep, so this would be to do those necessary repairs to the tank, so we did get an estimate from the co- the company who. Would ma- would do the repairs, so that's, that's why this number is so inflated.
Everything else pretty much stayed status quo, yeah.
Yeah, if I go to the very last page. Total operating revenue. Total operating expenses.
It's not gonna tie out because I don't have the operating revenue numbers. If you notice, they're empty. I said I still need to get that from, at the very top. I need to get all those numbers from Infomark. Keep going.
I was looking at losing five million.
No, 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 no. I have to get all those.
Carol needs oxygen.
I do.
Yeah.
First four orange blanks are, have all the money in them.
Anything that's, whatever is in orange, I still need to get that from Infomark.
We got a hell of a rainy three scubbin.
So.
Hey, well, moving right along.
Questions from the enterprise fund? I know, I mean, you'll have plenty of time to review this.
Well, this one's also basically a, uh, gray stone, so.
All right, we're all done?
That sheet's done then. I have a bunch of notes.
Fill me in now. Okay, we've looked at this. Now, obviously you're going to go now and fill in all the numbers that you didn't have, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then what happens?
Then you see it again.
Come back to you first.
Yep, it comes back to you guys first. And then, uh, what'll happen is that's, that, once you guys are good with that, that'll be the, the document that you end up. Approving, not adopting, so approving, which sets the high watermark for the budget, which, once you guys approve the budget. It cannot go up. That's why I'm saying just throw everything at it right now that you think you might want. If there's questions, whatever, we can always take it out. But once it's approved, it it can't go up.
Will there be, uh, estimates of tax dollars?
Yes, yep, yep, I have to finish, I have to finish those numbers and I did check with Russ. And he said it's like a, maybe an hour or two, he already has all the sheets, Infomark has them. I just need to get them, the numbers and they can crunch them.
That's why that capital reserve is so important, it's gonna make or break all of.
Yep, the capital reserve, that CIP template is my top priority for the next however many days it takes me to get it finished.
Okay, so in your opinion, we don't need another meeting before the June first meeting that we're going to vote on. If this is our high watermark.
I I am comfortable that, well, I have a workshop set for, before the June first meeting, so I will have these, all these revised numbers to you. By that date, or before that date, uh, hopefully mid next week at the latest. Um, so you'll have time to review them and we can go over them again during the workshop. I can still make changes during the, um, during the meeting and up until the point where you say, yes, these are the numbers we want. Once it's approved, that's it. So and then that's the, the numbers that they'll use to send all the letters out to the residents saying, when you get your tax bill this month or this year. Then these numbers will not exceed, whatever that ends up being, your, you know, your assessment will not exceed X. And then from there, between that budget and the public hearing, and actually it changes during the public hearing quite often as well. That's where you chisel away at it, mold, shape, whatever you need to do to get it to the final adopted budget for next year. That makes sense?
Yeah.
So we basically have, we have like three months to work on it.
So we ideally, we, we need the next week, cause that's when the, the next agenda goes out for the first. We need the next week to get the rest of these numbers together to give you guys a good, confident.
Yes.
Budget.
Yes.
So, but, but that, in the interim though, if you want to, even, even before, if you wanna come sit down with Laura. Um, and schedule some time with her to either, if you have questions or to better understand things, please do so.
Yes.
Okay.
Not next Friday though, I have a.
Yeah, no, that's Friday. So is there any other questions for this budget? I think this was a really good workshop or meeting, or on the budget.
I I feel really good about this, so yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so then let's move on to district manager items, monthly report.
Laura, you wanna go over admin?
Sure, um, my, my big things for, I know this is for April, but it actually happened May first, uh, the software is up and running. Uh, we still have a few bugs that we're working out. I successfully sent. The first ACH payment from the system today, which is great, um, so that, I gotta wait till tomorrow, make sure it goes through, but I think we're good. So that was like one of the last big pieces. Um, so when you ran into a few things that we have to have Microsoft fix for us. But overall, considering the volume of data, which was all of it, that we brought over, it went very smooth. So we're still, um, following up on the hurricane, Ian, as you can see, Faciliton working through that, you guys saw the. Plan soccer fields, all that, so any questions on any of this?
Of the, uh, savings of staff time. Or scheduling the soccer fields didn't materialize. One of the.
I don't.
I heard, you know, for doing this, was that we would, you know, how much time it was tying up, uh, Georgia.
Laura, you wanna take that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
So we're at the tail end of the, the seasons right now and then with the fees, the fees gonna propose to be updated. We'll, we'll see that savings in late summer when they start reserving for fall.
Are you still too early?
Still too early.
Okay.
But we have had like the school reach out and it's, this is, this is a good opportunity for us to work through some of the kinks. Um, like for instance, the school had, um, right here, the, the elementary school. I guess historically, and I'm just honoring historical agreements that we don't charge the school for PE or, or, or whenever they choose to use the fields. But we were able to work through Faciliton with them, how they could reserve it, and then we could set them out, set them up in the future. So where anytime they did reserve, they, they wouldn't charge them a fee. So we're working through some of the kinks at some of the leagues.
That makes sense, and they don't charge us for part.
The only question that I had, it was actually on the second page, so I know the, the, um, the swimming instructor has. Pulled out, doesn't wanna do it. Do we know, was it insur- it was the insurance and the thirty percent?
Uh, Tim reached out and inquired, um, if she would be willing to do a twenty percent split, but the, from, I don't know that we've heard back from her yet. But my, my guess is that it was the cost of the insurance and that's something I don't feel like we can budge on, is, is requiring insurance.
Yeah, yeah, I would budge on the, on the percentage and, and even maybe the first time, something really small to see if there's buy-in from the community of you, of doing it. But if it's insurance, then no, I just, that's the only thing I had.
I wouldn't. Wouldn't be opposed. To either having a revenue share or. Be able to do a certain amount of, you know, pro bono lessons or sessions with, you know, certain groups, so.
I definitely think that there's some other avenues that we could pursue, if not partnering with. A, a local club or something like that, or, or per teacher, or I've seen some posts on the community page where. Um, a college student's coming back and they're a trainer for the summer, so, um, I'll, I'll follow up with Tim and find out if he ever heard back from Tori.
The reason why is cause I know they canceled at your last H R meeting.
Yeah, there, I don't know all the details, um, Lauren, I don't know if you do, but I know that they. They, there was. The, the question is, at, at Stony Brook, there were someone that was doing, um, uh, swimming lessons. And the board has pulled that back because of liability. Their insurance, our insurance has, has gone up significantly, so they don't allow that at all.
I just, Randy, Randy just sent me a note in Teams. He said that the swim instructor was the insurance.
Okay.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe we can find out who that person was at Stony Brook and see if they'd be interested in partnering up at, at the Commons.
Yeah.
Or, or putting, you know, a, a note out there to any, you know, instructors maybe interested that we have a facility available.
But, but would they have to bring their own insurance?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not gonna provide.
No, no.
And that's the same, you know, that's, that's the same philosophy we've had on all of the areas. And we run into a little bit of an issue sometimes on the soccer field, cause we have, coaches will come and they will have structured sessions. Um, without checking in with us and while making sure, without us making sure that they're insured and, you know.
Hard on our field, it's us.
Yeah, because, I mean, there, there is some liability there.
Any other questions for Laura for the admin?
Nope.
Report?
No.
Again, uh, we, we, this preliminary, oh my goodness. It's too early.
Part of, part of that has some of the, the new reporting format in it, uh, about a quarter of them are not following the new format. So, um, I just copy and paste what they said.
Okay, so the show, again, reiterating, we, we notified the sheriff that we have a specific format that we want anytime that they have a duty. Detail that they do on behalf of the district that we pay them for, we have a specific format that they wanna, we want them to report back on. So it's a learning curve with their, um, deputies.
Could you send that form? Uh, I'd like to see a copy of it. We're pursuing the same thing in Pelican right now.
Yep.
Why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah.
And I'm gonna tell you, on July whatever. Those fields are closed. Gonna have to probably keep an eye on that.
So I do wanna bring up, um, we've talked about internally, historically, it's been an issue with, um, cause there's not, there's not a gate. On this gate that gets to the concession stand and to the playground area. We were talking about blocking that off, at least for a month, the first month, which would block off the playground, but.
Block what off?
Blocking the playground and access to the construction or to the concession stand.
I mean, you can close these gates.
And then they close, then close everything.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
You can shut it down.
Yep.
Where you run into is people hot, jumping over fence.
Anyway, so the, the plan is, just so you know, the plan is to put a couple of goals, smaller goals at the fun park in the grassy area. And, and put up a sign encouraging folks to go to the fun park. And if, if, if we do get enough desire, um, we were talking about potentially allowing, like the adults to go to the Commons. Cause it's a little more rough there, but we're gonna start with the fun park and just see if that gets any traction.
Okay, regarding, I kinda wanna touch with that, maybe, you know, so regarding the detail, cause I actually was able to touch. And talk probably to at least three of the ones that were doing detail here and I.
And talk probably to at least three of the ones that were doing detail here, and I still believe there's some confusion on directions that they need to take. Regarding the parking, I, I know this is gonna be over soon. But um, one of them mentioned that she had to reach out to somebody in staff because she, she herself almost ran somebody over, right? So that was a few weeks ago, and uh, and she called staff. Because they wanna go ahead and start a towing and they were given direction not to tow. So I think, I think I talked to you about that, so I don't think that was ever the direction from the board, because we didn't increase a hundred thousand dollars to just not do anything.
Yeah.
So I wanna clarify, and then one of the deputies that does all the reporting that is really, that I spoke with the last, she actually does all the detail at Gateway Greens. And she mentioned that you can actually request a specific officers to do the detail, and she actually is a resident of Gateway Greens.
Really?
I mean, the, and then when she showed me the detail and, and, and it is the one that has like everything, tag numbers, like this is who I talked to, I mean.
I know which one it is.
So to me, when I have somebody that's, I feel copying and pasting, I was there, I left there, I came back, I left, I went. Uh, if I have, if I'm paying for, if we are paying for it, then I would request somebody that's actually doing the work and, and, and using the form that we're asking for and following it up. So if that's an option, I would like for us to utilize, you know, who works best for the district.
Okay, good to know. I didn't know that we could request specific.
Me neither.
Detail.
Yeah, that's news to me, that's great, anything else for me, because I'm kinda, I, I'm kinda hurting, so I'm gonna drop off. Uh, just Chelsea, text me if you need me for anything.
Alright, thanks Laura.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Thanks.
Alright, anything else for admin? Alright, next, Public Works, Andrew's first monthly report.
Alright.
So I don't have a lot to add, a lot of stuff um, that I was gonna touch on. How do you catch a unique rabbit?
In a unique way?
Unique up on it.
Very good.
Thank you Carol for that.
He says it's seven o'clock.
It's late.
Uh, so not a lot to add, um, I was gonna touch on a lot of stuff Stephen did early in the meeting. Uh, regarding the, the lake restoration and also the weird adjustments, um, so you guys kinda have a good update on that. Um, if you wanna go to the pictures, um, if you guys haven't seen where we had the fire, I believe Daniel's Preserve area.
Yes.
Uh, conservation area thirty, um, it got pretty tore up, I actually did a walk through um, that area, so we're getting some pricing. Um, to improve the areas at Ver.
Oh, these are not in the packet, this is just on the screen, is that right?
No, they're in the.
They were in a pack.
Next.
Didn't go far, oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, so there's, there's actually some pretty big rutting and things through that area, uh, that we're gonna have to get smoothed out and then. Um, you know, eventually get planted back, so.
This was or was not a conservation area?
Was.
Yeah, it's a conservation area.
Just dig a channel through it, we'll move the water from A to B.
Um.
Did, did we have to report this to South Florida?
We did.
Okay, so we did.
Yeah, and they actually did a walk through there, they just happened to be out for inspection and, um.
Yeah, because they were in Pelican about a week ago, not called this fire.
Yeah.
This one, lightning, and then the one that we just had last week, I don't know, yep.
Yeah, I don't think we have a, as significant damage like we do here, because we didn't have any equipment run through there, um, this area behind here.
Yeah.
But not like that.
Oh, okay, because the equipment was running.
Yeah, um, I haven't, I haven't physically walked that one, Elle did, um, she said it's not.
That bad.
Not bad, so.
Any questions for Andrew?
Yeah, any other questions, um, I, I know, I mean, we'll, we'll get, I'll get a little bit more concise with my report as we go along and um.
When are we gonna get our street signs replaced out there?
So, working on that now, um, that, the first portion, the hurricane portion of the project. Uh, met with Lykan, it's actually this week, we get a, we did a drive-through, um, and discussed uh, making those areas priority, you know, the hurricane signs priority.
The ones that were destroyed.
Yeah, yeah, um.
It looks bad.
And he's working on a, he's working on a schedule for me, I've asked him to provide, provide me a specific schedule. Because I think that the, it's been kicked down the can, uh, or kicked down the road a few times, so. Uh, we do need to get more specific on that schedule and I should be able to provide an update on that.
Hey, how long have you been on board?
Uh, it's been four, it's my fourth week.
Okay, congratulations, and already starting to use kick the can down the road.
Yeah, there's a lot of things like that, that I, for me, for me.
How many cans did you find?
I'm, yeah, I picked up a few, so, uh, hopefully we can set some dates to those things and, and get a little better about having more specific dates, so.
Any other questions for Andrew?
I do, I do have some.
Okay.
So regarding, so three twenty-five, uh, Latoro removal request. That's the only request outside of the pond standards, which are the reporting that you attach to this, is that what it is?
Uh, where are we looking?
Three twenty-five.
Is that a page number?
Yes.
It's the last on, in the admin section, on the second page of your report.
At the very bottom.
Oh.
Latoro removal, okay.
Lake, the one that says for removal in Lake eighty-five?
Yeah.
Um, I'll have to find out what that is specifically.
So my only feedback is regarding community-wide ponds and then that one. I noticed that they did have heavy spraying, probably just because it's dying now, I would say between two and a half to three and a half weeks.
Okay.
Um, we talked about this before, so back to the pond standards. It's not up to, it's eight feet wide max. There are still a lot of ponds out there that are way beyond that.
The spray, the spray width.
So when I went and I actually read every single the, the report from Cross Creek, that tells me the pond number and what they did. There's no way, because I literally went one by one and I took one page and I, I checked those ponds. Absolutely no way in compliance with pond standards, then furthermore, I.
Do you have any, do you have any specifics, like once you checked, just so I can verify?
Sure, I, I have a page, I'll, I, I'll give you my highlighter page with my notes.
Well, I think it would be beneficial if the three of us rode, because I would like to learn it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, same thing, go over to Pond one sixteen, brought it up a month and a half ago, about the head walls being totally blocked, they're still totally blocked.
Yeah.
We got a picture of that, I'll leave in, in there.
Totally choked.
That one actually says that they clean it, but then I wanted, I wanted to touch on this specific method of how they were doing. So, Ed brought this up before. So if the, if the water, okay, so if the water ends right here, and then you, then it starts Latoro all the way to the middle of the pond. What they're doing is they're spraying between what the water's edge. And maybe four feet out.
And backwards.
Backwards, so it looks horrible, like, so I'll give you an example, eighty-three, it's horrible, we talked about that before, and it was them utilizing the boat. If they're gonna make it not as wide, keep it to the eight feet, they have to do that, that particular treatment, because that, it's not the rock, it's the Latoro shell. They have to do it from the inside of the pond, spraying it out, because now what you have is slope, dead vegetation. Latoro, so then you have to now go there and remove the dead vegetation, which then you created a shelf on the middle of the pond of Latoros. And we talked about that, so, so I think that, and that's what I pointed out to you guys, right?
To go and just show him.
We have to kinda show, you have a, you have a.
Challenges.
I have a meeting of the minds, because I cannot tell you from none of this, I cannot, I can, I will tell you, from all the report, not even one, the boat was utilized.
Okay.
So I think there's a lot of opportunity, I'm gonna focus a lot of this.
Around when the, when the water.
Yes, yes.
So it's, it's always a moving target.
Yeah.
But they gotta have it in their head, that they're only gonna maintain that four to eight max. Because if, if, like, you know, Flo, you just said, we have had ponds where it goes short to short. Because the water level drops and they just take off, you don't wanna do that, because then you gotta kill them, then harvest them, it's.
A, a, and that, and, and then suddenly the, when the water comes, it's gonna come all at once.
Oh, yeah.
And that's when you're gonna have a problem, because now it's totally bare, there's no protection. So I think there is definitely opportunity for us to look into that area.
Ed, is this that head wall you were talking about?
No.
No, a different one?
Yeah, on the golf course. Yeah, this is behind it.
Okay, so we don't have a problem if it, because the, the pond standard says three feet from each side and in, of, clearly in the front, but if it's behind it like that, we're fine with it.
Right, yeah, the one on the golf course, you can't even see the head.
It is that lake though, one sixteen?
Yeah, I think it's one sixteen, it's right off the seventeenth tee.
Okay, I'll, I will investigate that one.
Okay, okay. Any else?
And then under Parks and Recs, um.
Before we leave it.
Okay.